So, welcome everybody to the February 9th School Board Meeting. This is going to be a little unconventional as events unfolded the past couple of days. We've got several people who are remote and some who are present in the City Hall. So we will begin and the official time is 6:07 and I apologize for the delay. Please join me in the Sledge of Legion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Item B, excuse me, item B, any adjustments to the agenda?
I have no adjustments to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Item B, excuse me, item B, approval of minutes?
I make a make a recommendation that we approve the minutes from last month's meeting. As shown.
Is that both meetings or one?
Both meetings.
Okay.
For both?
Yes.
Yep.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussions? All those in favor? And so are we going to be able to see, can you see Paul and Beth?
Yes.
We saw them, yeah, we saw, I would recommend that in addition to putting your hands up, just say aye or nay.
Okay, great.
Aye.
Super, yes, so five oh. All right. Item E, communications and correspondence.
I have none.
All right.
None here either, Jen.
Okay, great. Public participation will be handled in the same manner. Our board member, Elizabeth Alteri, can still take those comments and she can read those to us, so you're going to use ealteri@elberschool.org for any public participation.
Jen, what if we have someone in the audience, in the public, that would like to speak? I don't, I don't know, I just, there are people, so I'm just wondering.
Thank you for calling me.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, what, what'd you say?
Is this a time to speak? I just wanted to share.
This would be the time for public participation, yes.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, this is a little unconventional, so. Mary Martel, fifth grade teacher, president of EEA. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. On behalf of the education, the Elsers Education Association, we want to thank everybody. First of all, our superintendent, our school board, our wonderful principals for all the support, trying to make things work in a very unconventional time. It's been, it's taken all hands on deck and we really appreciate all of it. Secondly, the EEA, as you know, is, or may not know, is growing and we're becoming stronger and more solid each day. We'd like to become a part of the discussion regarding important matters that affect our staff as well as our students. Things such as reopening decisions, whether it be this year, in the fall, with the new COVID relief package funds coming out or policies going on, we just would really like to be a part of that discussion, opening up the lines of communication. We're up for it, so when we can be a part and you welcome us in, we would like that. It is our goal to be working together cohesively with the school board as well as Mr. Higgins. As teachers, we are the ones in the classroom working with our students each and every day. As you guys know very well, we're working through hybrid models, remote learning models, a little bit of stuff in between. We've been embracing the Polycoms, Zoom meetings, office hours, hours of planning and taping and recording and whatnot. I thoroughly understand we're all exhausted from the top down. I don't think anybody that's working for the Elsers School Department right now isn't running on empty, to put it nicely. It is adding an enormous amount of work for everybody and we, I know you understand that, we just felt it should be stated. Probably saying that we're, everybody's exhausted would be putting it lightly. With all the cameras and the Polys and stuff, we are anxiously waiting for that acceptance use policy to be in place. I know we're close and I think that will bring a lot of comfort to a lot of people. The EEA Executive Board, just so you guys know, we have a process that we're following. We meet month, we meet monthly, excuse me, as a board. We also have regular meetings with our entire members, just updating them, keeping the lines of communication open. I've also been invited and attended two webinars, which was quite interesting, with union presidents across the state, sharing ideas, things that work, things that aren't working, trying to give each other support and suggestions. I'm learning daily how to move with the union, this is new for me. We're hoping to continue to be professional, respectful, and to become an integral part of the process for our district. And anytime that we can be of assistance, please reach out. We're all available and willing to step up and help in any way that we can. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mary. I have a question. What, you said mass, multiple, acceptance use, what was that policy, what were you?
I think the technical is the acceptance use policy, is that what it's called, Dean? Is that the official name of it?
Well, we have an acceptable use policy for technology, but what we're working on is trying to refine with the help of our attorneys, remote instructional guidelines. And the association actually has been part of some of the conversation on that, but that's a document that will be coming to the board once we're able to finalize that with our attorneys.
So it's?
And what that governs is instructional guidelines for staff and for students who are receiving instruction remotely. It's been a long process, there's a lot of details that go along with it.
And we know we're close, which is?
Very close.
Which is good. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Always, it's always great to have you here. I think your comment about being part of the meetings and planning process when it comes to reopening our schools, whenever, knocking wood that is, sooner the better, I think it's completely logical. You guys are the ones who are on the front line. It's like not consulting with your doctors and nurses about, you know, what's going on with COVID in the hospital. It's logical. I think the board should have some further discussion and workshop about this. You also mentioned that you guys meet monthly. One thing I had noticed is that a lot of our reps, like such as Nicole, come to our meetings, our city council meetings, and sometimes even our normal, non-COVID year, our school board meetings. She's always involved, trying to keep things. Would you guys want or welcome any school board members in any of your meetings?
I, I think that would be a wonderful idea.
I'd say you don't even get back to us right away, but you know, something to think about, mull about, let us know. You know, because I think we, I think communication is, is always important. You guys are the ones teaching our children.
And we're working as far as the union's concerned too, in building our communication. We think we have a good system going now where if people have concerns, they go to their building administrator who brings it to the executive board and we meet and discuss. So we're, we're really working our hardest to communicate well for our, for the staff and getting their voices heard as well, so.
Well, it's also my duty as a school board member to communicate with you guys, all over the community, and make sure that I'm on top of what's important to everybody. So I'm saying it from, from my perspective, you know, I don't know exactly, you know, if you could speak for your entire union, as I said, it might be something to think about, mull over, get back to us, but it's definitely an idea I would be open to.
But take that into consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
And if I may, just want to respond, and I appreciate Mrs. Martel coming and speaking this evening. One thing I do think it's important, and we've talked about this throughout the year, the development of the instructional programs in each of the schools was developed with a great deal of teacher participation with their building administrators. So there was a great deal of participation and input into what the instructional model was to open the schools.
All right. Item G, administrative board report. Mr. Clifford, who is being interviewed?
Good evening, how are you?
Great.
So you have my report. So whenever it's around February vacation, we start thinking about recruitment for the following year. And so early March, that's when myself and guidance will go up to various schools, but obviously because of COVID, we have to change that this year. So we are, there's some Elbers High School students that are in the media program at ATTC under Mr. Anderson, and they're putting together an informational film for us, a video that'll be about eight to nine minutes, and they're putting that together right now, and I hope to see it hopefully this week. So that will be going out to schools and then we'll follow up the video with a Zoom meeting with myself and guidance with those eighth graders to answer any questions or anything that they may have. And stay tuned for eighth grade open house. We're not sure what that's going to look like yet, but the recruiting will start right after vacation. We do have high numbers, especially in the surrounding towns, which is exciting. We're excited about, and it'll be the class of 2025, which is amazing. So I'm looking forward to seeing numbers and seeing those kids and meeting with them as much as possible from now until the end of the year. We've only had two new Friday scheduled days, and I just wanted to give you some data on those days. Overall, in general, they've done very well. The enrichment activities have been well attended and also the tagging, the numbers are right here. So the first Friday was January 29th. In those three net sessions, we had 765 tags from our teachers, which is quite a few. In February 5th, we had 803 tags. And so students are getting in and they're meeting with teachers in small groups and individually, it's something that they really needed. They're making up assessments, which are exciting, but more importantly, grades are going up. When I wrote this principals' report, we had 15 students off the ineligible list. I talked to Mr. Frost today and that has gone right around 25 students now. So as of right now, I don't have all the grade point averages until the end of the third quarter, and we'll see how much they go up, but that just tells us that kids are getting things done and students that were ineligible to be in activities are now eligible so that they can, and that's exactly what we wanted. The enrichment activities, we've had a lot of different things. Friday, we had healthcare workers, and so we had DHS alums, including Dr. Stephen Dewitt, Dr. Corey Dewitt, Nurse Casey Omler, and physical fitness trainer Amy Bowles. And that was a really good session. We've had roundtable discussions of gun control and the COVID-19 vaccine. We've had admissions counselors from Colby, UMA, Hussin, UMA, KBCC, and EMCC. Outdoor cardio, Nikki Beck, Bashan from Fame about how much college really costs, and she went through all of the lines and broke down what financially it looks like, and it was really interesting and really, her message was really to shoot for the stars and go through the process before you say no to college because you don't think you can afford it, a lot of times you can afford it. And we've had activities in the gyms, in the gym, so they've gone very well and we have a full slate scheduled for Friday, for this Friday also.
Dan, I have a question. I know we had spoke at the January meeting about not wanting to see a shift in absences. So the students who definitely needed to be there and they were tagged and they were able to meet with their teachers, and that probably increased their attendance because they were able to do so. I, I worry that we're maybe not going to have good attendance from students who don't need that, so did you see any of those trends at all?
Well, the, the total absences are the first and, and so if you look at the first Friday, 122 absences, the Friday before that, we had 138, before that, 126, before that, 142, before that, 144. So more students are being involved and more students are showing up for school, which we're happy with. And this past Friday, we had 130 absent, which is less, which is a little more than the January 15th, but higher than January 22nd, January 8th, and December 18th. So more participating on those Fridays, which was something that we were looking at and Jen, that was our worry also, you know, those students that weren't tagged, if they were going to come into seminars. And I think we've had a broad range of seminars, so they have participated and got something out of it.
And is there student input for those seminars, Dan? Is that how you're collecting what they're interested in or what would be of use?
Yeah, well, part of it is actually, a lot of it is, so during a regular year, these are a lot of the offerings that guidance has in our YES program, and we're going, and we're using that list right now. And so what that means is, in a regular year, Colby College will come visit and UMA will come visit and Hussin and meet with kids, and they're just not able to do that this year. So we're, right now, we're filling in with as much of that information as we can get. When we get further into the spring, you know, then we'll go to the, to the YES topics and more of what students are looking for.
Dan, I have a quick question. So I think this is kind of the same thing as what Jen was asking. So yes, attendance was up, which is a good thing, but did you see those students who have been attending Fridays all along not attend and more people who would have missed attend? You know, I think what you say is, was there a trade-off? Like, did you gain the students who were falling behind and lose the students who weren't? Like, was there a shift there? Is there any tracking of that?
Yeah, we didn't track by individual student, that's the only way we could do that. We just looked at total numbers or whole numbers as far as attendance for the day. So I'm not sure, but it's something that we'll look at, we can look at.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan, can I ask you a question? Sorry, Abby, are we going to go?
No.
Dan, if you could, I think many of us around the table know what the intervention tags are, but for some of the members of the general public who may not know, can you just describe the process of what a tag is and what a student would do if they are tagged by a teacher or if they tag a teacher?
Sure, yeah. So on Fridays now, we have three focused learning sessions, and what that means is, if I have, let's say I have four students that may have missed an assessment or need to make up an assessment or something like that, they're available at this time, and if I'm their English teacher, I can tag them and see them for at least one session, and they can come in and I can, I can meet with them and talk to them and go over anything that they need to, but most importantly, make up those assessments. And also, if a student needs to see a teacher, they can request a tag of that teacher and so that they can tag them and they can do the same thing. They'll come into the room and see them, and it's remotely handed person. So even if, so Friday is a, is a great day, room kids are zooming in also and they're being tagged from home and having one-on-one sessions and going into breakout rooms and small rooms that teachers are using.
Thank you. And the other question, just to clarify, so in looking at your number of students who were, came on, off the eligibility list, am I understanding correctly that over the two weeks that you've had the system in place, 25 students who were ineligible are now eligible?
25 students that have, are either eligible, fully eligible, or if they were passing multiple classes, they are, they are failing less now. So if they were failing three classes, let's say, they've been off by one class or two classes, so now they're only failing one class or maybe two classes. So their, their recruitment is there.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, I have a question. So I know that tags right now are probably higher than they will be once we've had the system in place for a while. Has there been any thought or talk about possibly a way to just pull those kids who have been tagged into school for an in-person day on those Fridays and switching it up for those who are not tagged to be remote?
Sure. No, we haven't talked about that yet. We just want to hopefully see the GPAs go up and the eligibility list, ineligible list go down, that's our concentration right now. If we get to that point, then we can look at it again and, and come up with a new plan. But right now, we just plan on doing it this way. I, I think with, you know, not having any time from Monday to Thursday to meet with students until just after school, I think we're going to be in this predicament for a while. So I don't see this going away, you know, in a month or so. You know, I can see this, this lasting as long as we're in the hybrid model, for sure.
Thanks.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Clifford?
I'm just going to throw this out there. How, how is Zoom working for kids that have been tagged? Is it, is it a challenge? I know we've had challenges at my house. I don't know if it's a challenge for others, but we've had some challenges. So I'm just curious if it's?
Sure. In talking to the teachers, what they're, what they're starting to do with their process is they tag the students, they zoom in, and they're putting them in breakout rooms so they can meet individually with them or a couple of students at a time. And then it's more private, they get more out of it, that's what our teachers are finding.
Okay, thank you.
Kelly, can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
No, if it's a problem with, in your household, I would say, call the school right then.
Yep.
And see if?
Oh, I have.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. So many times, those issues do get addressed, so.
Yeah. Oh, no. Yeah, no, it's been fine, it's just, there's been some tears, but we're working through it.
Dan, those students who have been there for the seminars, have you gotten any feedback from them about what they thought or if they liked it or if they were excited about this new idea?
Yeah, we haven't done a survey, but just feedback from teachers that host them, they've been, they've been really positive and, and if I haven't run one, I've sat in on a lot of them, and the students have been terrific. You know, they really have, asking a lot of questions and using the chat in Zoom, they've really done a good job with it and they've got some, a lot of good things out of them.
Dan, also, one more question for me. I know we were talking about measurable data for the attendances, and that would be great going forward. Is there an opportunity to measure the failure rate again so we can, can see how that is progressing?
Yeah, absolutely. During February break, we have vacation school, and that's the last time the students can make up assessments for the second quarter. And then so I'll have the GPAs for the second quarter finalized, and then I'll compare those to when we have progress reports go out for the third quarter, which is in about three more weeks. So I'll, I'll compare those GPAs then.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Clifford?
One more. Mr. Clifford, wouldn't it be possible, since these Fridays have, are available via Zoom, would us as board members be able to sit in on some of these discussions?
Yeah, absolutely. If you're interested, yeah, I can send you the link.
Please do, I'd love that.
I would love that as well, Dan.
Sure.
I don't, just a curious question about that, Abby. What part of that would, as a board member, would you be kind of wanting to listen in on?
I want to see how the kids react to these, how engaged they are, if they are feeling like this is something that they are looking forward to. We want to keep these kids engaged in our learning process. And right now, we can't go in, physically go into the schools and volunteer and observe like we normally do, so this is, this to me, sounds like a perfect opportunity to do so.
Okay. I wonder if though, as a board member, we're, it's best suited in this situation to have those updates from the administrators?
Think you could, I think you could potentially do a survey of the students, craft a survey to find out their interest level, what they're getting from it?
I don't see this as any different than going in and observing any other time on a non-COVID. And being that we have so few opportunities to do so at this moment, I believe it's important we take every opportunity that we do have to observe, to observe.
Okay.
Dan?
Yeah?
Yeah, I, I would just be concerned about the impact on students in one of these groups and if they would feel any kind of discomfort having people in the room who, people observing who are not normally part of their discussion. I just, and I'm curious as well to see how these things go, but I'd be cautious about imposing, I guess, on the educational process and the activities in the, in the room that these students are engaged in.
Once again, of all the, you know, years I've been volunteering in the schools, not once have I felt like we have, I've ever behaved in a manner that was imposing or hurting on the child's educational experience. I think after seven years of volunteering in this school district, I think I've got a pretty good handle on that and can possibly handle myself via Zoom.
I don't think it was a question of your personal, I was just curious, Abby, on, on the board aspect, you know, we've, we've done things in the past where we were able to survey the families or something like that, and I was wondering if that would be more a way that everyone could, could be involved and get this, and get similar results.
I think if people want to be involved, they should zoom in sometime or watch it in repeat.
As a follow-up to Paul, I don't think it's a concern of any board member's potential behavior. I think it's more of an impact on how the students will react to having an adult in the classroom that isn't part of that particular piece, so. But I don't, and I don't think that's what Paul, I'm not going to speak for Paul, but...
I think we lost Paul.
I don't think it's a concern, you know, obviously, you folks are all elected board members, I don't think it's a concern with any of your behavior in the classroom, but I do agree with Paul about the impact on students and their willingness to share or be normal with adults outside of people that are typically in their classroom.
I think that a big part of that would depend on what the subject matter is of the, of the, I mean, if you're asking questions about financial aid or, or one of those types of things, maybe kids wouldn't ask questions that, that they would think of asking before, but in a, you know, form of like vaccinations or colleges that are coming to talk about what their college programs are, I don't think that would be so.
So, so Dan, I think, I think at least for me, I can't speak for Abby, but if, if you have one that you think would be a, one that wouldn't put children in an uncomfortable position, that would be a good option. I would be open to any of, any of the above, and I do agree with Abby in it being almost like observing a classroom in that regard, so.
Okay.
Dan, I do have one more question, sorry. Is there a way for kids to access Zooms after the fact? So if they've missed a class, can they go back and watch a Zoom?
Yeah, we've talked a lot about, a lot about that, and we're not, we're not recording them right now, and for the simple reason, you know, we've talked about this a couple times at board meetings, you know, at the high school level, I'm just afraid attendance is an issue right now. If they know everything's going to be recorded and they can watch that class anytime they want to, then attendance will be even worse.
Yeah, yeah, I hear, yeah.
The other part that...
That's, that's the number one reason right this second.
Yep.
The other part that goes along with that, Kelly, is in addition to what Dan said, the remote guidelines that we're trying to finalize, we're looking at a way that we could address that issue, because for a student who was absent for a legitimate reason, that would be an opportunity to go back and see it, but for someone who skips out of class, there needs to be a different mechanism whereby that student can get the instruction they missed. So that's, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Absolutely. So the reason I asked that, Luke had a doctor's appointment this afternoon, so he missed Spanish, so I'd love for him to be able to go back and watch that.
We're hoping those guidelines will be ready to go right after vacation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Clifford?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clifford.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Ms. Gabby and Ellie?
Good evening, nice to see you all. I don't know if you can see me. How's everybody doing tonight? I'm just here to talk a little bit about this week. We're kicking off winter carnival at the middle school, and though it looks a little different than our traditional winter carnival right before February break, I think the kids are really excited to participate. We have a Choose Your Own Kindness Spirit Week, trivia contest within each grade level, so kids will be competing in trivia, and we have a Winter Wonderland Photo Contest. So show your EMS pride, kids can email me their photo, and we'll have some judges judging that contest for them. So we're really excited about this week. So yesterday was Wear Green for Gratitude or Blue for Encouragement. Today is Red for Self-Love or Orange for Helpfulness, as is tomorrow. And then Thursday is Green for Gratitude or Blue for Encouragement again, and then Friday, we have Maroon for Kindness Starts With Me. So it's pretty exciting. I love seeing the kids come in with their colors on, and they're having a great week thus far. Well, the new month brings a new theme for our staff wellness room. This month's theme is self-care, self-compassion, and self-love. We have a Take What You Need table, where we laid out some inspirational stickers. I tried to include pictures for you in my report, but it was probably a little bit difficult to see that there are stickers that say really cool things on them. We have a vision board center for staff, so they can kind of think a little bit forward for themselves, and then we have a self-care calendar station, where it gives 28 days of different things that you can do to take care of yourself. So we're pretty excited about that. We're gonna be wrapping up basketball this month, which seems like it was, it went five very quickly, but we've had a very successful season thus far. It's also been wonderful to see the kids playing in the gym, and I think, given the circumstances, things have gone really well. The live streaming has worked out very well, I think, so that's been nice. We have robotics as a new activity that has just started, and we have STEM and teen students participating in that, which is also exciting. And then, parents' progress reports have been updated in Jump Rope, so be sure to log on and check your child's progress. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to the teachers or myself, and we'd be happy to answer anything we can. Any questions?
There's one question.
Sure.
You mentioned basketball, and I forgot to ask Mr. Clifford, will Unifi be able to do any of their programs for basketball this year?
We just got some guidance on that. We haven't really parceled that out yet, but we're hoping that we can, at the middle school, create something within our school. I'm not sure that travel will be possible for those kiddos, but we definitely are looking at an intermural situation, so.
Great, thank you.
Jen, I don't know if Dan is still on, but I can tell you that Josh, Josh at the high school is talking about something similar, so that the kids will have an opportunity to participate. I think that same guidance that was given at the middle school will also translate to the high school.
Yeah, Jen, it won't look like it has the last few years, but we're gonna definitely do something for them.
I was wondering if we might be able to do, like, teachers versus students or the helpers, and then stream it, so everyone who enjoys them so much, me or staff, might be able to tune in one or month or twice, but...
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll do something for them.
For sure.
Sweet. Thank you very much.
Erica, this will probably come up later in the hybrid discussion, but are you seeing the same challenges with attendance that the high school is?
Very similar, so, and I'm gonna give my report on the hybrid piece, but we're seeing a trend downward in fully remote, so we've got some more kiddos coming back, and the Polycomps are really helping with some of that engagement on the remote days. So I can talk a little bit about that later, though.
That's great. No, yeah, perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. This is Clifford.
Good evening. So you have my report, and I just wanted to focus on a couple of elements in that. First, I just want to talk about how awesome our third graders are. They've gone from setting goals last month about being caring and helpful to catching anyone being kind at school, so they started a little celebration thing called Caught Being Kind, and I included a couple of little notes for each other about a four-square game gone awry, and another student stepped in and created a new four-square game, which is a very big deal in third and fourth grade. And the thing I loved about it the best is they tied all that into what we're doing school-wide, so it's a great celebration of supporting positive behavior. So that's just something, it's just, they're just doing a great job upstairs with the third grade team and our third grade students. Our kindergarten students are still doing the coin drive that they've done in the past. I included that in my report as well, and that's been shared out by the kindergarten team and on our Facebook page and website. They're just collecting coins, they sit in bags, we do the mandatory waiting period, put them in the coin things, and then we'll take care of them over February break and donate those funds to the food pantry, the Loews and Fishes. That's something that they've done for the past seven years, so they really worked hard to make sure that we had things in place so that they could do that, so I'm really proud that that's still going on. As I talked about before, we were talking about the attendance issues. I just wanted to give you just an idea that Mrs. Frost, who's our guidance counselor, Mr. Wood, and myself, and classroom teachers, had 18 different attendance truancy meetings during the month of January. So that's several a week, as you can see. Out of those meetings, it's really a conversation focused on getting kids back in school and what we can do to support them. And a couple of things that we've done, working with parents, is we've done some modified schedules, so that kids are able to come who haven't come at all for a half-day, and then we're kind of increasing by increments. Some of the conversations were just, kids just needed a little bit of a reset, and that conversation's helping, making sure they know that they can take transportation when they have that, and just talking about ways to keep kids engaged, and just opening that lines of communication. We've had a lot of success with those meetings. There has been some challenges still, and I'm not, I don't want to sugarcoat that, but there's been some challenges, but the communication between the school and the home has really never been stronger since we've had those meetings, and I think it's been a positive piece to really do that. I call them truancy meetings, but even if you have excessive tardiness or just general absences, truancy is only for unexcused absence, but we classified all those absences together, whether they're excused or unexcused, because kids were just missing too much school. So we've had those meetings no matter what, but then we just did our truancy stuff for the state, but those are pieces that we've talked about, and we've had some really good success story. We have a, I have a friend who probably attended four sessions for remote learning, who has not missed a day since we come back to school on a modified day, and it just warms my heart. There's a lot of success stories like that, and just a lot of connecting with families and having them reconnect with school. It's been, we've had a lot of success. So I just wanted to share that and just give you an idea of what that looks like, and those were the bulk of our first meetings, you know, over the past couple of months, and now we're doing our follow-up meetings. We set a plan in place, and then we have a follow-up to that meeting to make sure that it's still working, and then after the second follow-up, we usually, if things are going well, we won't meet again, but if not, we'll come back and meet again. So we do, between two and three weeks between the first and the second meeting, to give kids a chance to adjust or come through. So there's been some really good communication about what families are experiencing during this pandemic, and how that's impacting their home and impacting their school. So it's been good for teachers to be a part of that conversation, as well as myself and Mr. Wood and Mrs. Frost, so I did want to share that, and did want to share that there is some success with those meetings that are coming through. So EMS is sending out progress reports. They went home yesterday and today, and remote students were mailed today, so those progress reports are coming home. We're at a half-year. We're reporting four different times a year, so we did parent-teacher conferences, progress reports, we have parent-teacher conferences again, and then we do our final progress report. So we only have two reports that go home, but you should see communication about parent-teacher conferences coming up in the next month or month and a half with regard to that. If you have any questions about your progress reports, please reach out to your teachers and myself, and we can answer any questions. And we're still looking for some support staff for our students, and a couple of other pieces that I'll talk about later. That's all right. Any questions for me?
I have a question. I love that these meetings are happening with parents, so important. And this may come up later in your report with hybrid, but I'm just wondering if you have noticed a trend, like, as you are speaking with parents about truancy, like, what, is there something that is, is there a trend among these families regarding the truancy? Like, why, do we know why for the most part?
I think, I've shared this before with Mr. Higgins, I do think that our two-parent working families are being hit real hard...
Yep.
...right now. And I think that having teachers and myself and Mr. Wood being a part of that conversation has really helped us put some additional supports in place, which I will talk about a little bit later.
Great.
But I really do think that has been eye-opening. Our two-parent working families are being hit really hard, and we're trying to be really cognizant of that, and how we help and support them through that, and through avenues such as the why, or with their daycare providers, or friends and cousins across the street, however, they're managing those pieces. It's been, I think that that's been a big piece.
Yep.
I think in addition to that, our older population that is in the risk area for COVID, we have a lot of guardians and parents that are in that category, and I think that that severely impacts their comfort level and their ability, you know, to support kids in the manner that they have in the past. So I think that those two things are big trends, especially the two-parent working families, which I've shared with Mr. Higgins and the leadership team before.
Yeah.
But that's a great question.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Mrs. Clifford, you started those meetings in January, correct?
No, we've been doing them for a little while, but I just did the tally, just because I thought it was important to talk about. I've talked about it for the attendance issues for the last two board meetings, I think, Mr. Higgins, and I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what we're doing, and, you know, how many families that we're going through. This month's a little bit less, because we're doing follow-up, and then, and then I have a, I kind of created a watch list of kids based on the meetings, that when kids miss, I'll call that day just to check in and see what's going on. So we're just kind of working through those pieces like that.
So you just answered my next question, which was, have you seen it go down at all since you started doing that? But you kind of answered that in your...
Yeah, there's been some successes, and then I just have a couple of kids, of families and kids that I just, you know, I have extra concern about, so when their kids are not in class, or they don't come, I make a phone call. We all kind of have like a little watch list, I call it a watch list, just because if they're missing a day, I just want to check in and make sure they're okay.
You know, I have one more curiosity question for you.
I was on a meeting today for my regular job, and there was mention of that a lot of parents opted not to send their children to kindergarten this year because of all of the restrictions. Did we see a similar, similar situation to that?
We did. The kindergarten numbers are the lowest they've been in a while, yeah.
Typically, Beth, we have between 90 and 100 students at the kindergarten level. This year, we started the year at 73, and I want to say it might be at 76 or 77 now.
78, yeah. And we had hired a person to be a first-grade teacher, and we ended up shifting that person to our kindergarten teacher, we ended up shifting that position to fill in for first grade, and why we had the remote teacher. So we ended up making some shifts based on those numbers.
It was definitely an atypical year for...
Are you guys working on a plan for, are you expecting that those kids that didn't come to kindergarten this year will come to kindergarten next year? Are you expecting that they're gonna come and hope to be going right into first grade?
We're expecting that they're going to want to come back to school next year, and that's a conversation we're gonna have to have, Beth.
Yeah.
But that's a good question.
Any other questions? Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Clifford. Mrs. Gold.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to be back in person. Hi.
Nice to see you.
I know, thank you. So at HCTC over this last month, I'm excited to report that Brookside To Go is gonna start the Wednesday after break. We will be starting with a small menu, and people will preorder through a Google form that we will put on Facebook and/or email out, and people will have to provide license plate and car information, so students can be runners, and we'll do everything following COVID safety restaurant guidelines that the kids had to learn through their EMCC badging that they did this fall. So we're really excited to start that, and we just ask people to be patient in the beginning as we try this new format out. We're also excited to report, Early Childhood has started their preschool videos, which I had reported on a little while ago. The state is allowing for us to have students earn their clinical hours in this format, while right now, students really can't get into daycares and schools to earn their hours. So students are able to document their lesson planning time, their videotaping of the lesson, and how it relates to standards, post it, and I've included on my board report the two different ways you can see them. If you go to the Caterpillar Clubhouse Facebook page, or you go to our YouTube channel, you can see the videos that our students are posting there. Also very excited, we had our first Hospitality Advisory Board meeting. Every program has to have an advisory board, and that board is made up of an academic teacher, a post-secondary representative, as well as business community members. We were really excited by the big attendance of our community members that are excited about this program. Lot of great ideas about virtual internships for kids to start getting them going in areas where they might not be able to go out live yet, but also have a lot of people that are willing to start having students come get their hours as well, so that was exciting. Recruitment, our media program has been working hard on the Ellsworth High School recruitment video, as well as HCTC videos. We did decide at our last HCTC Advisory Board meeting that I will be going out to high schools and presenting to kids in person. It's gonna take a lot longer than usual, because I won't be able to present to an entire sophomore class at Ellsworth or MDI High School. Instead, it'll be done in small groups, where students are sitting six feet apart. We felt it was very important, if we didn't do it that way, kids would opt out of watching a Zoom or watching a video on their own time. This way, we'll reach more kids, and we're also gonna add, for every high school, I'm gonna do a parent Zoom presentation as well, so that parents can also have access to the information and the application process for this year. Finally, we're also excited, Seaport and Cortland are opening back up, so our health occupation students will begin their clinical hours after break. Kids will have to be, with parent permissions, of course, COVID-tested every two weeks, in order to be allowed into the facilities, and the nursing homes provide that for us at no cost to the student, so that's a great thing also, that our kids can start getting those hours in that field as well. Do you have any questions? I have plenty of info for hybrid report, but I got all my numbers.
I do have one question.
Yes.
How does one get on the email list for the Brookside Cafe?
If you just email me or LizConnors@EConnors@EllsworthSchools.org, we are happy to add you to the list. I think what we're gonna do is drop the menu the Fridays before and give people until Tuesday. I will say, it'll probably be first come, first served, in terms of certain items, so that we don't get slammed in the beginning. Our culinary numbers are down this year, and with our schedule right now, the way it is, I don't want to completely inundate them. Those first couple of weeks will kind of ease them into the process at first, so just be patient, everybody. Yes, Abby?
Just for the people at home who've never had the opportunity, can you kind of give them a little overview of what the menu sometimes is like?
Yep, so usually, the menu is student-designed. They have to do a variety of different things. They have to learn their cutting, they have to learn soups, appetizers, salads, plating. So popular things are, their taco salad is a huge best seller. They always have haddock chowder every couple of weeks, because that's another huge one. We have a lot of fishermen that are very generous and give us seafood. Scallops are always a huge seller, so you really get a variety of things. If we were in person, it's usually about a three-entree choice with a soup, salad, and dessert, and I think to start, we're looking at a base, at one basic entree, and then we'll gradually increase over as we get their feet under them a little bit.
Excellent.
Yes, we're excited.
I think it's fantastic. I'm actually really excited, my son went to Caterpillar Clubhouse, and I'm really excited.
Yeah.
And also, videos, you said that you can, you know, you can hop onto and watch, because my job is for, and...
Oh, yeah, very, very relevant, Beth, very relevant for you.
For work, it'll be fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome.
Amy, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
What nursing homes do we have partnerships with?
So right now, Cortland and Seaport are our easiest ones. We've actually had really good luck down east. There is one, I want to say, in the Cherryfield area. There is one, I want to say in the Cherryfield area, which is far away. But for our Sumner kids, it's actually not. They've been really great with our students. Um, what we have struggled with is, we would love to have partnerships with other community nursing homes. The problem is you have to have a clinical supervisor onsite at all times for their hours to count.
Yeah.
And so for us, busing wise, those are our two best sites.
Gotcha.
We also were super close to an agreement with the hospital, which we've never been able to get into before, our Ellsworth Hospital.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And right, as we were ready to sign on the dotted line, they pulled because of COVID numbers increasing.
Gotcha.
So as soon as I think that evens out a little bit, they are very interested in partnering with us and getting that up and running locally, which will be huge for our kids.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Very much so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Dan, do we have, um, Mrs. Sergeant and.
Mrs. Sergeant is covering something at Adult Ed tonight, but, um, Mrs. Corbin Ramos, I believe, is on. Rachel, are you there? We can now.
Thank you, Rachel.
Barely.
Hi, everybody, it's nice to meet you here tonight. Let's see, you have my report. Uh, first with some, uh, coronavirus relief fund grant highlights. As we move through the process of determining the next needs for the new, uh, S R two funds, um, I'm coordinating the expenditures of the remaining funds of the previous grants we've had. So we're reviewing our expenditures and that's helped us understand our needs for the local budget next year, as we know we're in budget season. Um, and we're trying to kind of balance out what our grant funds are so that we can think about our local funds and, um, so for example, the grants have allowed us to purchase digital subscriptions that teachers use to work with teacher, with, uh, students remotely, helping them to better access material from home. And I'm just feeling so lucky to be part of a great team with Debbie Richards, our instructional coach, and Laura Jones, our IT director, to assess which platforms have been the most effective in meeting our curriculum, instructional and digital needs as we go forward. So now paired with the feedback from our teachers and our students, we're looking at how best to prepare for the year ahead with both local and grant funding. So we're looking at what we were able to buy with our, um, grant funds and making sure that if there are things that the students and teachers thought were really effective, that we, um, kind of switch out things that might have been in our local funds in the past with new things that we've tried that would be in our local funds in the future when, um, we no longer get grant funding. So, um, we're kind of working with our teachers to make sure that, um, these are things that will continue in the future. And we're kind of doing an analysis of that as we move forward. Um, we're so lucky to, that, um, Laura and Debbie and I have been able to work really well together and think about those, um, kind of instructional needs and, um, move forward that way. With our McKinney Vento grant, uh, since our last board meeting, the team working on the McKinney Vento mini-grant of $5,000 has made a lot of progress. Contracts with two behavioral health agencies have been signed. So students, uh, without stable housing can start receiving counseling services. Also, uh, backpacks with personal and school supplies have been purchased. Thank you, Debbie. And assembled by several students are in community service hours at EHS and will soon be ready to be handed out as needed. Um, additionally, Stacy Wood has been completing professional development that will help her to be an onsite McKinney Vento contact at EEMS. Um, as Mrs. Van Dorn, who's our district's McKinney Vento homeless liaison, is located at the high school. I have been pleased to be a part of this group that includes Ms. Van Dorn, Stacy Wood, Hokai, and Debbie Richards. Um, one thing I did want to put out there is that, um, our grant has allowed for, um, lots of different supplies and professional development, um, and these counseling services. But one thing we, um, we're hoping for is to get really sturdy backpacks because a lot of our students who don't have stable housing really use backpacks to, um, as their, as their way to kind of get back and forth for everything that they really need. Um, and so if there are businesses in our community who would like to consider donating to those, donating those, um, we would love to hear from you. Um, and might like to contribute in that way, we would love that. Um, we are thinking about some grant funding, um, but haven't thought of that exactly yet because we don't want to, uh, skimp on that. And if we could find other sources of funding, we would love to hear from you. So I'll just put that point out there right now. Because we want to be able to support our students and have something really sturdy for them to count on as they, um, move back and forth for about 12 students that we're working with right now. Our community arts curriculum, very excited about this. Uh, as I reported last month, although we were unable to provide field trips to the grant during the pandemic, Nicole Cardano from Theater Today has developed theater programs that she'll be presenting throughout the rest of the year to our students via Zoom. These programs will be tied into the curriculum and incorporate some of the games and activities that she played with them in the past when meeting with them, the four shows of the grant. So this month, she put together this great program for all the classes and grades, kindergarten through two, centered around a story called Click Clack Moo, I Love You by Dorian Cronin. Um, it's a really cute story, and it revolves around the theme of kindness that we know, um, the schools are working on. And allow the students to stretch and act out animals from their seats. Uh, she found a great way, um, to zoom in on the big white boards. And, um, I was able to watch, uh, I zoomed in with her on a few of the classes. Um, and we found one of our classes that has all the media releases signed and everything. And so we're going to record one of the classes and send it to all of you board members so that you can see one of the programs. Um, it's so fun, the kids have been having a great time. And, um, and I wanted you to be able to see it, uh, so that you can see all the fun they're having. So she'll work with all the kids in grade K eight before the end of the year and, and including some readers theater for some of the older students. So it's going to be a great way for her to zoom in. And also she's working with all the remote kids as well and incorporate theater and even reading comprehension in really fun ways. Um, and, uh, it's a great way for them also to kind of get some theater integration into the classroom in kind of a safe and socially distanced way. So, um, that's been exciting. Any questions? All right, thank you.
I have a question, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, regarding the counseling services for kids, how are they accessing that?
Um, I believe they're going to be doing it through, uh, through telehealth. Um, I, though I'm not completely confident of that, I, I think that most counseling services now are, um, online, um, so that they, they have a, they're able to, um, go through, you know, um, confidential servers and able to go, um, on like a, uh, confidential line with counselors. But it's, it's through the, uh, behavioral health, um, services that we have contracts with.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is Superintendent Higgins the next, the last board report we met last?
Yes.
I, I did just want to really quickly, before we go to, um, Dan, I did receive an email from Jen Legasi. Um, and she just stated, I wanted to, to go back to this before we moved ahead with, with Dan's. As a remote teacher, I think it's important to remember that if more than being in a classroom, you will also be in a student's home if they are participating remotely. And this is in regards to the conversation we had about, um, joining those Friday, some of those Friday sessions via Zoom. She also said, I think it's important to take into consideration before board members enter quote unquote classrooms this year. It's not a typical classroom like prior years. And Jen is a third grade teacher at E EMS.
Thank you, Beth. Mr. Higgins, your report?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. At our last meeting, I had let you know that we expected the ED 279 subsidy report. And we did release, uh, received that on January 26th, the date of our special board meeting. Well, I'll provide a little bit more of an update on that in the Budget Update Agenda item. I just would like to touch on a couple of key points. The figures included in the preliminary ED 279 are based upon a proposed increase of $45 million in funding for K through 12 education over the biennium. And right now, that is to be split up with $22.5 million in each year. While this is the initial proposal in the governor's budget, it shows ongoing support for public education. It increases the state's commitment to general purpose aid to 51.83%, as we still try to get towards that goal that was set so long ago, 55%. And slightly reduces the required local mil rate. Uh, it's also important to remember that even though that is positive news for our district and most districts, that the state's budget will not be finalized until the legislature approves the state budget, and that's not likely to be until June this year. But it's always nice to start off with, uh, positive news rather than, uh, the negative. Uh, with regard to the legislature, the first session of the 130th Maine Legislature has convened. They did convene on December 2nd, 2020. And my understanding is there are over 1,700 bill submissions up for consideration. Amongst them, as we know every year, numerous bills related to education. Included as topics will be minimum wage rates, updates to certification, several labor and bargaining laws, and of course, uh, the state and education budgets. The first session is always referred to as the long session because the statutory German date is not until June. But as that session proceeds, I will keep you updated on the status of bill proposals. Some will be at board meetings and some will just be through email updates, particularly on bills that impact education in our local school system. Also, as in past years, uh, we will maintain an ongoing dialogue with our local legislators. And in Ellsworth, we're represented by Senator Louis Lukini, Representative Nicole Grohasky. And Superintendent Association also stays in strong contact with the members of the Joint Education and Cultural Affairs Committee and the members of the Joint Committee on Appropriations. As you heard a couple of our principals talk about, we still have some vacancies that we're looking to fill. Uh, one, a resource room teacher of grades five through eight, technology integration teacher. Still looking for a long-term sub-science teacher at the high school. Still looking for a Net Tech III at Hancock County Technical Center and an administrative assistant to the Special Education Director. Would like to take a couple of minutes just to report that it's with great sadness that, uh, we mentioned the passing of two of our longtime and highly respected members of the Ellsworth School Department staff and family, Kathy Wayman and Jimmy Shadak. As many of you know, Kathy worked for the Ellsworth School Department for over 20 years in special education and reading literacy. She regularly followed her former students as they progressed through our school system and ultimately graduated. Additionally, she maintained lifelong friendships with many of her former students and with staff members. Jimmy, uh, worked for the school department for over 30 years, served as a custodian, a groundskeeper, and a coach of many, many sports. Uh, he maintained a vivid memory of Ellsworth High School athletics over the years and accomplishments from his many years of working with students as a coach, but also in his role as a groundskeeper. He prepared the fields and our grounds for all those games. Both Kathy and Jimmy were highly respected by their peers, their students, and the athletes that they worked with, and our community. They will both be remembered for their outstanding work with our students and service to our community, and they will certainly all be missed. I, I ask you to join me in a very brief moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I'd like to close my report and just say, as we approach the annual, uh, February vacation recess this coming weekend, we'd like to again express our appreciation to the seriousness with which our students, staff, and families are taking in their continued vigilance to complying with and supporting the health and safety requirements, um, that we have and in keeping our schools, students, and staff as safe as possible. Would also like to remind any of our families who are planning to travel over the upcoming break to again consult the most current CDC requirements regarding travel, whether or not you'll need to quarantine when you return or get a negative COVID test. And if you are planning to travel, uh, and your child's return will require quarantine or a negative test, please contact our administrators and school nurses to inform them you're traveling. It's really important to ensure the proper quarantine and negative test result is completed and in place. And, you know, as, as with previous vacations, the communication has been excellent from our families. So we appreciate that, but we encourage you to please stay on top of it. And, uh, best wishes to all of our students and staff and families for a safe, happy, and healthy school vacation period. And also to those school board members. Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
I, I think we all are, Kelly.
Thank you, Dan. All right. Any questions? Onto committee report, item H. I can probably start, now we can go down there. Um, uh, dropout prevention committee meeting was postponed. So we'll be having that, um, in a couple of weeks. Um, uh, Dan and Paul and myself have met for finance committee briefly. Um, and Dan, I'm not sure if you were going to mention in your report, but we do have the opportunity to participate in a forum that the city of Ellsworth is going to be holding next Wednesday. Um, it'll be, uh, available via Zoom and the public access channel. Um, this was, I don't know, Dan, if you want to explain this?
Yeah, I can. Jen, I was, I was actually going to do it in the budget update, but I'll, I'll be happy to do it.
Oh, great.
Uh, what Jen is talking about is, um, Mayor Hamilton from the City Council, uh, reached out and contacted, uh, Jen and myself about the possibility of hosting for the community, uh, a workshop that includes a finance committee from the school board, finance committee from the city council, uh, city manager, myself, and the director of the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, it's not a presentation of our budget proposals, but what it is is a process by which we will go through and talk to our community about the process of budget development. What are the factors that go into how you develop your budget? How do you establish priorities? What are the sources of revenue? What is the potential impact of COVID going to be in the coming year? Uh, we've always had good communication between the school department and the city, but I think this is just another step in, uh, putting that information out there to our community members. Because I think our community members are well tuned to what's going on. But because this is going to be on the public access channel, and I believe over Zoom and possibly Facebook, you know, I think it, it piggybacks on what we've seen since COVID started. You know, if you look at city council meetings, you look at our meetings, I think we have a greater level of participation and viewership now than we did prior to the pandemic. So I think we're, we're anticipating having a lot of people attend that virtually. Uh, and, and we look forward to it. And again, that is Wednesday, February 17th. And that's going to be at six o'clock, I think, right, Jen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll give you a reminder on that at, at the last item on the agenda, just so people know.
Excellent.
And then the other committee for myself was HCTC Advisory. So that was, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, as Amy mentioned. Um, and she gave a brief, um, description of that in her report. Um, and it was really great to see everybody and support her in those, um, visits to the high schools and the different ways that she'll be able to reach them for, um, recruitment. So that will be really exciting to see how that goes. I think that's all I have, anybody else?
Well, the policy committee met, and we have a few things that we're going to go over tonight, as a matter of fact. Um, we actually kind of circled back and talked about some things that, um, we had talked about before, needed some more information on, we are considering. And the policy committee actually decided that we should give you guys about six to eight weeks to focus on the budget because this is, as you said, very appropriately, it's not just your regular job and we all, y'all have your COVID jobs. Now, this year, you guys have your COVID budget job. But you guys need the time that you need for, for, uh, your committees respectfully. So we're probably not going to meet again for another six to eight weeks, depending. But, um, but we had, we had a great meeting the other night, and we're going to talk about those things coming up.
Super, anybody else?
Paul, do you want to touch on personnel, or would you like me to?
You can go ahead, Kelly.
Oh, okay. Um, so the personnel committee, um, we had, I thought, a really great, um, professional development opportunity that we sat through. Um, it was a Zoom meeting, um, a Zoom training, which was, um, really open to my, my eyes to what teachers and students are going through every day. Um, it wa, it was, it was, I felt, um, you know, very. It was, I felt, you know, very informative. Dan, do you want to touch on that a little more?
Sure. The PD opportunity that Kelly's referring to was a collective bargaining workshop put on by Drummond Woodson, who's a very, first and foremost, education attorney firm in the state of Maine. They do this on an annual basis, but they put a different twist on it this year because they were looking at bargaining with regard to being in a pandemic. And I would agree with Kelly, I thought it was very beneficial, very thoughtful, a lot of information that was put forth in that. And I think the other part was the Personnel Committee, which is Kelly and Paul, and I meet with them. We also met a few days after that to go over some of the things that we learned and continue to make preparations for upcoming bargaining. Can also say that Personnel Committee, we did receive a request for information from two of the associations that we have, so Personnel Committee is going to be very active over the next several months.
Thank you.
Great. Any others? All right. Item I, old business. Item J, new business. Number one, there's no candidate to present for the board this meeting under the consideration of future nominations, so we'll move on to item two, update on hybrid model instructional
I think I recommend you go right through the same order that you did when you had your board report, so Mr. Clifford?
Mr. Clifford, thank you.
Sure. So things that are working well, in-person students, they are doing well. And what we're finding right now is students that have really struggled for the first half of the year or the second quarter when they decided to go fully remote, they're starting to come back to school and be in the hybrid schedule, and that has really helped them But some remote-only students are doing very well, and it is a small percentage, but for some students, this is going well for them, and they're thriving. The Polycom cameras have really been helpful to the teachers, so instead of looking down at their laptops, you know, they have a lot bigger screen to see the kids, and it's better for communication. So those are going well. Some things that aren't working well still is just the remote attendance is poor, you know, and that's something that we're working on with home visits and things like that. The individual instruction overall just hasn't gone very well, but with these new Fridays, they're getting more opportunity to meet with students individually and in small groups, so that is getting better. And students are starting now to retake assessments because they have more time, you know, so I think that'll continue to improve. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Dan, just like Kelly had mentioned with April earlier, are you seeing any trends that are typical of why the remote attendance could be pretty poor?
So what's happening is there are some remote-only students that we're not seeing at all, okay? And we're trying to catch up, we are catching up with those students. And then there are some students that are in a different category where they're in the hybrid model, and they come to school on their in-person days, but then they don't zoom in on their remote days, you know, and that's been an issue. And so, you know, we try to tell them that, you know, in a regular school year, that would be like missing two or three class periods or days of school a week and still trying to keep up with your work. And so I think that's going to get better, I hope so. You know, I'm sitting in on the junior, senior team meetings, you know, we had one today. You know, there are just some seniors that aren't on target to graduate that, you know, and it has a lot to do with the remote days, it has most everything to do with the remote days, and they're just not doing the work, or they're not zooming in, they just refuse to. And, you know, yeah, I don't have an answer for that yet, I wish I did. The students that are full of remote, those are the ones I talk to, their parents on the phone, I'm trying to get them to come back. And like I said, slowly, they are coming back. I wish more would come back, just to give them an opportunity to pass for the year. That's what we really want. But yeah, there's some difficult situations, just like K-4 and 5 to 12, there really are. And April's exactly right, the parents that are both in the households and that are working, you know, the freshmen, sometimes the sophomores, they're struggling. They are, because nobody's at home. And, yeah, it's been a struggle.
Can you also, oh, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Jen.
Can you clarify, Dan, on the days that a student is in person, are they having, are they having every single period so that they go run right through all of their classes? Is that correct?
Yep, correct.
And pre-hybrid instructional plan, we had a rotating schedule, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
So are you seeing students overwhelmed for trying to keep up with those classes every single day, all of them? I'm wondering if that is...
Yeah, I don't see students overwhelmed. You know, I see students that are, you know, struggling to put this pandemic in perspective and trying to get through it. I see that every single day. You know, there hasn't been a student that has come to me and teachers haven't shared that, there's just so much work I need to do that I, there's just no way, I don't have enough time to do it. I don't see that. I think teachers have done a terrific job of finding, you know, the right amount of work to give. And I think if you talk to some of our teachers, you know, they've pared it down, you know, this year compared to other years, not that their expectations aren't the same, but as far as body of work, it's less. You know, and it's, you know, it's difficult, it's difficult.
One of the things that I would like to add, I know that April talked a little bit about her work with parents with regard to truancy, and I think you've got some truant students across our grade spans. I know that I did receive a communication from Mrs. Wright, Sister Prescott High School. She has gone through the truancy process at the high school and has been in communication with a number of families and sent the formal communications out to them. So just as we were seeing at the K-4 level with April having those conversations with families, that often is a mechanism whereby we help to get students who haven't been coming, particularly on the remote days, to start trying to access that. It's difficult.
I actually had a question similar to that. Can you tell us if our dropout rate is, if it's higher than last year and what the percentage might be?
Yeah, we won't know that until June.
Oh, really? So you don't have people already...
I think there are students who are at risk that we're aware of.
But they haven't made a formal?
No, the formal reporting of that comes from the Department of Education, usually it's in the summer.
Oh, wow.
But I can answer this, there are a lot more kids in jeopardy this year than in previous years, by far.
Interesting. Dan, have we given any look at, like, for those kids that are at the highest risk, they're not showing up, are we looking at classroom numbers and seeing if there's any way possible that we can even squeeze a few more kids in five days a week? And I know that obviously we can't, we don't have room for all of them, but I'm just, there's got to be a way where maybe we can do something for these highest-risk kids.
I would answer this in a general sense. One of the things, and I think we're all happy to see this, we're starting to see some of the numbers, not just nationally, but in the state, start to trend in a good direction. Positive cases are going down, hospitalizations are going down, deaths are going down. So as those go, what we're looking at is, are there going to be a relaxation of the restrictions and the requirements that we have? The other piece, and I haven't seen it yet, and I don't know how it's going to reflect upon Maine, because when you compare Maine, where most schools have had their schools open, at least in a hybrid model, there are schools across the country that have not been opened to students, period. I know the new administration in Washington is expecting the CDC to come up with some national guidelines. Whether those mirror what's in Maine or whether they make any changes on that, I don't know. But I think what you're talking about is, potentially, do we look at crossing over on the cohorts? And I think that's a bigger discussion, because one of the reasons that we're able to stay as safe as possible in our schools is with the requirements that are placed, and one of those is cohorting. But I think it may be possible to look at, that maybe you don't have to cross cohorts, maybe some of those students who are, maybe you can change their cohorts. Maybe there are ways to take a classroom that has six kids in it, and if your capacity is nine, maybe there's room for some of those. But that's something we've got to look at and talk with our medical people about whether or not mixing those cohorts as possible.
So you have conversation, so I know Sumner is doing this. That is, so they have, there are kids that are at really high risk, they're inviting certain kids back.
Haven't had that conversation with them.
Okay. That just, yeah, that might be a conversation to have. And, you know, when kids have, say, their seven classes, if kids can't fit into all seven classes, then if there's a classroom that is too full, then for that class, they go to the cafeteria and they zoom in.
That was a question that actually came earlier in the year, and Dan can probably answer this better than I, but when you look at the high school, for example, they're already utilizing some of those larger spaces for that situation. We're using the cafe area, using the all-purpose room, using the library for those. So they've really done a great job utilizing those spaces for that situation.
So Kelly, what we're doing with those classes, so in a normal year, the AP room is used for study halls. The cafe and cafeteria, so there's a study hall in there every single period during the day. We use the AP room if there's overflow. So if there's too many students in a classroom and they can't have the class in their classroom, they go to the AP room. And we've also turned the half of the library into a classroom, so there are two different classrooms they can use in those cases. And they're used, I don't know about every single period, but most periods, they're used.
Thanks, Dan.
Personally, I would like to echo what Kelly had said. I think, I think when we talk about in what ways can we move forward, I think we're going to talk about the hybrid instructional model update through the rest of the year. I hope we aren't in a position where we are still hybrid by the end of the year, but knock on wood, that we can have some forward motion at some point. But I think it's really important to discuss about in what ways, you know, keeping in line with the guidance or as guidance changes, being very proactive about either having, you know, a group of people that, you know, is going to meet or have these discussions and really get the input from everybody that is in any of the manners that we would need. You know, I think teachers and parents need to be involved going forward, but having this discussion about, do we have a certain percentage of our student population that we might be able to work things out? I know, obviously, we're going to be in a position where we need to work on looking at that equitatively, but going forward, just like Mr. Higgins had mentioned, are there classrooms that maybe just naturally became a little uneven because of students either going remote or vice versa, that might be able to take another student or two? And then also, how do we work in possibly having somebody go five days a week that really desperately needs to? So, you know, I certainly hope that we get to the point where we're having those discussions as the weeks roll on.
I would really say, Jen, I think that those conversations are likely to move forward. Again, numbers are trending in an appropriate way. Obviously, vaccinations are on the horizon, there's a lot of talk about how that's going to roll out in Maine when they become more available in Maine. But I think as we move forward, we need to look at, what are the opportunities that are going to present themselves to us moving forward as those factors come together? The other thing to be cognizant of, we saw an uptick in remote students in some of our grade spans as the numbers started to climb. Some of those students are starting to come back in, so a classroom where you might have had six students on a maroon day may be back up to its capacity on a maroon day. So those are pieces that we certainly need to look at and be prepared for whatever opportunities come to us.
I think it's time we also talk about how we reintegrate the plan with vaccinated, fully vaccinated people. So once we have, hypothetically, and I say this because I could laugh or cry, but hypothetically, if we got our teachers vaccinated tomorrow, two weeks from then, you know, we'd have a large group of vaccinated people. How do we count those who have been fully vaccinated in our total numbers of people within the building? You know, it has been brought up on a national level that, okay, schools can reopen without teachers being vaccinated. Well, did anybody ask the teachers that? I don't know, but...
My understanding on that was, I'm not sure we want to go too far down the vaccination road tonight, but my understanding is that was a statement that was put out, but then the administration came back and said, well, not so fast, we'll have to take a look at that.
Well, I just think that once they are vaccinated, and at some point, a lot of our seniors are going to have an opportunity to get vaccinated, because we have a surprising amount of seniors and juniors that are frontline workers. So then how we count those people who are fully vaccinated and have gone past the two weeks past the second vaccination, and with our total numbers, I think we might have opportunity there to bring back some more of our student population.
And again, I think along with the other factors, vaccination and the procedure that evolves in Maine, and at what point the education profession becomes part of the vaccination piece will be key to us moving forward. I agree with you.
I think we should start putting, we should start making formulas and getting things ready, so we're not waiting for the entire teacher population and student population to be vaccinated before we're making a positive move forward. I think we have those conversations now.
I think when the guidance tells us that, whatever that formula is, we need to be prepared to move forward on that.
Well, I'm looking at the guidance as seeing that it kind of has a little bit of room to interpret that. That's what I'm saying. And I think that as a district, we should be having these conversations now. So hypothetically, next month, when we're having our meeting and we have, you know, please God, maybe, possibly, half of our teachers vaccinated, we could be looking at, okay, we've got these high-risk students, we need more people in the building. I don't want to wait three months to bring these more people back. If I can bring more people back in six weeks, that's when I want to bring more people back. But we can't do that at all if we're not even having the conversation.
Abby, I hear you. You want to come up with a plan so that we're being proactive rather than reactive when we have the opportunity.
Right. And we can't just sit back and wait for the state.
I agree.
I think if we don't do something, we're going to have, we have seniors who are about to make the biggest mistake of their life. They're about to fail or drop out. I'm sorry, the state guidance is not doing anything to keep those kids here. It's up to us, period. And if I can, you know, get people on board, looking at a plan, something that teachers, parents, students can feel comfortable with, all stakeholders, let's start looking. Let's start looking at what we can do, let's think about where we could possibly be in six to eight weeks from now. Not six to eight weeks from now, starting to look at a plan. Because by then, we might have some kids two behind the eight ball to come back. Call me crazy. Go ahead.
I don't think anybody's going to call you crazy. Abby, I think we all want to see all of our kids back as soon as possible.
I think so, too.
I think that's one thing we can all agree upon. We want to see our kids back in our schools as soon as possible and as safely as possible.
But maybe more so than the state.
I agree. I think the conversation... I think the conversation, you know, need, need to start and hopefully, as we hear more and more about changing guidance, but even, even ahead of that, a brainstorming session or something to those, to that effect, that could at least begin a conversation so that everybody's kind of got some input to it. Because I really, I find that it's across the board, a variant of concerns and also ways that people have been really able to communicate some pretty collaborative ideas. So I think, hopefully, very soon, we would be able to have some sort of input and then move forward with that discussion. Do we have anything else for Mr. Clifford on hybrid? All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Ms. Gabby and Ally.
Thank you very much. I am happy to report that as of the end of February break, we will have a total of 44 fully remote students. So that's 10, 10 less than we had last month. 15 at fifth grade, 15 at sixth grade, eight at seventh and six at eighth grade. So we're trending in the right direction, getting kids back into school in the hybrid model, which is fantastic. I think it's really beneficial for them to be back in school for their emotional and social wellbeing and their academic wellbeing as well. A lot of positives that we're continuing to see, we have kids taking advantage of the after-school. I think I briefly talked about that last board meeting, but we've seen a bunch of kids being able to stay after with teachers and really get some of those interventions in place. So that's been exciting to see. We're continuing to use RTI in study hall times to work with students, to make sure that they have what they need and that we're either catching them up if they've had to miss for some reason or we haven't seen them on the remote days. We have teachers really looking for ways to engage students, like winter carnival, December spirit month. Those have been really helpful in engaging students and keeping them wanting to come to school. We're seeing some preliminary gains in our winter data. I don't have all of the data because they're still, students are still taking the NWEAs, but I get blips from teachers, which is really nice. They, they like to share the successes with me. So I've had a lot of really positive emails in the last couple of weeks about students making some gains. So that's good. Attendance for synchronous classes seems to be trending upward as well. So we're kind of in a groove of getting kids into a routine now that we're, we've got all those Polycom's up and running and all the grade levels are utilizing them. We're seeing a trend upward in attendance on remote days. The challenges that we are seeing are still there. We do have some attendance challenges. From the beginning of the year, we've worked on a tiered intervention system. So, meaning that the teachers will, if they're, if they're not seeing a student, they reach out to parents, make a couple of emails, make a couple of phone calls, and then they get referred to me. And then I intervene and make those phone calls and try to set up meetings. We are also working, Mr. Wood and I are working on the, we've had a little bit of glitch in our reporting of attendance. There was a couple of things that we just, buttons weren't clicked and we fixed it. So we're continuing to work on that situation. And we will be having some more meetings as well. But for the most part, when I'm able to make contact with parents, I see a difference in how kids attend and what they're able to accomplish. You know, time for, for PD meetings, things like that for teachers, collaboration is, is not really there as much. And thinking about, you know, having those plans in place for post-COVID and getting back to the things that we do on a normal basis, there's not been a lot of time for that. So that's still a little bit of a challenge that we're continuing to work on. I think my biggest worry or concern is my kiddos that are home alone by themselves on their remote days. I think that, that you heard from Mr. and Mrs. Clifford, that's, that's a challenge for us as well. The two-parent working households, even one-parent working household, working households in general are having a hard time trying to juggle that. And those kiddos are doing a great job. I will say, I think another really positive thing that's coming out of some of these experiences is allowing our kids to persevere a little bit. Certainly, it's a challenge for them. Certainly, it's a, a new way of learning. They've had to take a lot of ownership of their, of their learning and be had some out of responsibility. And I think that the perseverance and the skills that they're learning right now are really going to carry them very far in the future. So while there are challenges to everything, and even in a regular system, there are challenges as well, I think that some really important lessons are happening for my middle school students and, and I'm really pleased at how they're responding. It's not perfect. There's some social and emotional wellbeing needs that we're trying to meet and, and work with teachers on, and teachers are on top of it. I get emails, my email is full, but it's great because then I know and I can reach out to families. So, and the communication between school and home has been fantastic as well. So that's really appreciated. Any questions?
Ms. Gabby and Ally, can you clarify how the Polycom's are being used for students? Are they being used for students who are on hybrid?
Yeah, so, so some students are, I'll say it's a little bit different in each grade level. So some, some hybrid students are synchronously learning on their remote days and some, some grade levels are doing five days a week synchronous teaching. So I think it's really best, it went by what teachers set up for routines and expectations with kids, but making sure they're getting what they need. And teachers are still using office hours to connect with kids on remote days to make sure that they have what they need. I will say that some subjects are a little bit more challenging to synchronously teach than others. For example, science labs are not the easiest. So that's, that's been a little bit of a challenge, but our teachers are being really creative in how that, that plays out. Sometimes, too, when you're in math class and you have several different math groups, that's a little bit hard to do synchronous teaching with. So they're using, they're being used a little bit differently depending on, I think, sometimes the day because of, of what presents itself in terms of curriculum. But I know that they're being utilized and when you go in the classrooms and you see the kids on the screen and teachers are teaching, the kids are in there, it's, it's pretty awesome, actually, because you get your whole class together at once, so.
So you've, you've just confirmed what I thought probably is that, I need to email my son's teacher because he hasn't been telling me any of that.
Yes, for sure. And teachers are still utilizing weekly memos to parents. So if you're not getting those weekly memos, let me know.
And I don't know if you noticed, but as you're talking, I keep trying to peek around.
I know, I'm doing the same thing. Any other questions?
I have a quick question, Erica.
Sure, yeah.
How often is RTI time and study hall time worked into the schedule? Do students have that every day? How does that work?
Yeah, daily. So normally, in the past, we've been able to have 30-minute RTI, but this year, we've had to cut it down a little bit. So it's 20 minutes and then they have the 40-minute study hall. And we also do band and chorus during the study hall time as well. So sometimes kids maybe get two study halls a week, sometimes kids get one study hall because they're participating in band or chorus. Sometimes they get no study halls because they're participating in both. So, but we're trying to reach out to those kids who, you know, need extra help and have them stay after school if that's the case.
And RTI time, is that similar to the tagging system at the high school? Or is that time for, with a teacher?
Yeah, it's time for a teacher. It's a little bit, given the restrictions and the guidelines, it's been a little bit more challenging this year to move kids around to get the different groups. But I think teachers are managing pretty well and getting kids what they need, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I will speak, you know, as a middle school parent.
Yeah.
I find that the RTI time has been absolutely terrific because there are such small classrooms and you have such, you know, small, you know, almost one-on-one with teachers that that RTI time is utilized so beautifully that I think that part is working out just wonderfully.
Thank you, yeah.
You know, that's been my experience.
I will say that that's another positive to this whole hybrid system is that the small number of kids in a classroom, we've really been able to give kids more personalized attention than we normally would. Teachers are really doing a fantastic job of that. And they know exactly where the kids are and what they need, and they're reaching out to me for extra support. So it's, it's going well.
Thank you for pointing out some positives.
You're welcome.
It feels good.
That's me, I'm the black house wall kind of girl, so. Pollyanna. Any other questions?
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Mrs. Clifford.
So over the past couple of months, I've been pretty honest about the struggles that we've had with our hybrids. So I kind of wanted to talk a little bit today focusing on some of the innovations that have come from that. A lot of our classroom teachers have created incentive systems so that students who are completing their work, they're celebrating that and they're earning tickets and points and able to pick from a prize basket or a prize wall, depending on what class you are. They're really working on that. Another, one of the teachers takes her lunch breaks and gives feedbacks to students on CSO so that they're able to get feedback and communication whenever that she has the opportunity to do that. So I think this collaboration so is working. Some of our remote teachers for getting participation and attendance and success on remote days are doing these lanyards with pens and they're rewarding students with that. So what we're trying to really do is kind of flip the language or flip our script, similar to Erica's positivity in that classroom. Instead of saying, oh, you didn't do your homework, saying, hey, great job. You know, here's your homework, here's your pen, thank you so much. You did it three days in a row. Here's a celebration, those types of things. So they're working really well to do that. We've had some teachers who are starting to Zoom every day for morning meeting and home, or that introduction to the day into the lesson, and they've had some attendance with that. Any type of celebration with Valentine's Day coming, I know that some teachers have organized and done that. I was in Mrs. Frost's class while she was setting up that initial Zoom in the morning. So I just thought that they're starting to connect a little bit. Some of the teachers in doing that have gotten training from Laura Johns in the IT department on the Polycom's. And we've bought one per grade level. So ours are shifting around to classrooms as they're using them. So it's something that they're starting to engage in that way with students, just to try to get them off on the right foot. I know a lot of, a lot of students have a lot of links to different Zooms in regard to their day. So like if you have a student who comes to morning meeting, but they receive direct instruction from a special education teacher, that's another link to a meeting. And then they're going to physical education. Sometimes that's causing technical difficulties. So we're really trying to get students in the routine of, of doing that and utilizing those. So there's some innovation that's really, really come from that. What we're looking at, what, what we're looking at or what the teachers are communicating that are really needs is tutoring. So we're looking at setting up some tutoring and maybe take advantage a little bit of that after-school bus that the middle school and high school is using. So that's looking to be in place after February break. We're going to offer Zoom sessions and then we're also going to offer live in-person sessions after school. So those will be both options for students. And I already have a list of, of parents that are, that are interested in that. One of the other things that we talked about is, you don't, there's a couple of things that I'm, I'm hesitant on. When we're talking about, I just, when you were talking about bringing all kids back, which is something that we all want to do, you got to be really careful. I'm really struggling to staff half-days. So if you think about that, so if you're, let's say, Abby, if you come to school and you're working for me, you're an ed tech, you have an assignment on this day with this student, and then the next day you have another student. So I'm going to be honest, at this current time today, I do not have the staffing to bring, to do that. I can't, I can't do that. You're saying that and I'm just filling up with, you know, stress, to be honest, because I, we can't, I can't do that. I'm just flat-out honest right now. So that's something to keep in mind as you guys are thinking about that and moving forward and, and doing that, because we're still short-staffed. I've been here month after month saying that. And right now, I'm, I struggle to staff half-day maroon days. You know, we've talked about that often. So I think that's important to keep in mind. So with a hybrid, one of the things that we're talking about is utilizing those resources to the fullest extent and providing support for students on the remote days. Similar to the office hours that the high school and middle school are using, we're looking for some type of remote check-in with kids who are, who really need that. So that's one of our priorities is to identify resources within the department to be able to, to have that check-in with students, to help them get started on their homework, to do a social, emotional check-in, to do a, to help answer a math question or other question while the other teachers are teaching the students that are there. So I think that that's something that's really important and that we're looking at ways to solve that problem right now. In addition, we're looking for, when we chose our title population to receive Title I services, one of the goals, we thought it would be best if we saw all the kids that were there as much as we could in person. So usually you do a title caseload, let's say I have 15 kids, I see them five days a week. With hybrid and remote, what we did is we saw, we want to see all the kids that are coming in that are in person. So they're reading and then we have our remote kids that we, they give additional work on CSO, and then we see our remote kids that are remote only. So looking at providing support in the manner so that students who are getting title instruction would receive support on their remote days for doing that. So we're kind of looking at how to support things like that. The thing that we have in motion right now is the tutoring. We're looking to start that after February break and communications will be coming to parents, probably the beginning of break with regard to that. So trying to get that established and set up. But that's kind of where we're at. I think we're still having the same concerns that we had before is just students being able to do their work on remote days and practice the skills that they've learned before. There is some positive news. We've had a lot of students with the smaller numbers make gains in the reading assessments I talked about. I don't have all the data. I just got the data on my desk today, but on my plenary look, quick look, it was really nice to see that. It's something that I didn't expect. So I was really glad to see that a lot of classroom teachers worked really hard and brought kids up. And a bit off of that is every student in first grade, that's, that's two or more levels below is seeing, is having title services. So I mean, that's 100% of every student below reading level in first grade are in title services right now. So that's an amazing, it's amazing feat. And kudos to the titled staff and our classroom teachers for, for doing that work. But that's a little bit of, of good news. But it's tough, you know, it's tough. Teachers are working hard, students are working hard, and families are working hard. And we're looking at ways to help incentivize and, and positively support our students in that process.
April, I just want to say thank you for your honesty. We need to hear the challenges. That's really important. And I appreciate your out-of-the-box innovative thinking. It's great. Thank you.
I was just telling someone how very fortunate we were that this person has stepped into this role, who had this unbelievable technology background. And it has been so important during COVID that I think all schools should look at, you know, going forward, if you're looking for somebody to be your principal, they're going to need that. They're going to need that because it, I, I don't know what we would have done. Quite likely, you didn't have that.
Well, I think that's another thing when you get on the other side of the pandemic is, are there ways that we can leverage the technology that we've been using?
Oh, yeah.
Because there are students that, you know, you heard Mr. Clifford talk earlier, there are students that are doing a fully remote piece that are thriving.
Right.
And why would we not want to take advantage of that and perpetuate that? So, yeah, it's definitely a skill set.
Yep.
An important skill set.
One that we're really grateful for.
Thank you. Any other questions, Jen and Paul?
Thank you, April.
All right, thank you, guys.
As Mrs. Bolz is coming up, folks, just so you guys know, with your policy, you're almost at the two-hour mark. So you just need a consensus of the board, not a vote, just a consensus to continue after eight o'clock. I'm seeing a couple of nods virtually, I'm seeing a thumbs up, another one. So we got two nods, two thumbs up, and I'm sure Beth is acknowledging it somewhere.
Good evening, again. I have a lot of numbers for you tonight. The last time I reported to you, we talked about a phase and approach to moving our CTE programs to more in-person days. And tonight, I want to give you the update on where we are at with that. So at HCTC, we have 12 CTE programs, 202 students currently. As of right now, we have transitioned nine programs to the possibility of five days a week, which affects a which affects 123 students. We have two programs that I am currently in process of transitioning to more days a week than the hybrid schedule, and I have one who will come after that for our last 28. Of the 123 students that we have transitioned to the five-day model, I have four categories of how students are scheduled. What I think is important to remember is that every high school has their own schedule and their own ways of handling these situations. So the numbers are a little bit different based on the high school they attend and how they've handled this situation, which attributes to there being four categories. Of the 123 students that we have looked to transition to five days a week, we have 21 that are 100% remote in those nine programs. We have 12 that are four days a week. Those four days a week students are our Sumner Memorial High School students, who on Wednesdays are 100% remote. They do not send a bus on Wednesdays, they require their students to participate in Tiger Time. That's something the high school principal and I are starting to arm wrestle over a little bit, because as we start working on clinical hours for health occupations, some of those kids are going to need that extra time. So we're compromising and collaborating on that. But we have 12 that are doing four days a week, so they attend Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. We have 29 students that are hybrids still. There's a variety of reasons for that. One, currently Bucksport High School is staying in the hybrid schedule. We also have several families that do not have access to midday transportation. So because our high schools have not opened up in all areas to allow HCTC students to stay at their school the other half of the day, we have had to talk to every single family about, do you have the means to get home and pick up your child at 10:30 and/or bring them to us at 11:45? In some instances, based on high schools, some high schools are absorbing those kids if they don't have transportation within their high school. Ellsworth is transporting Ellsworth residents, we're using our bus drivers in our buses. Students that live in Ellsworth, we're bringing them home and/or picking them up. And then we do have some families who are really reporting their children are having major mental health issues, and getting them out of a two-day-a-week routine, they can't get them unstuck. And so they are choosing not to fight that battle right now because they're worried about bigger things. I've had a lot of conversations like that over the last 48 hours with a few families. Kids are really struggling, and so for some families, they're keeping them in the hybrid model at this time, and we're certainly supportive of that. And then we have 61 students who have returned to us full-time. So we have 61 kids that are attending five days a week. So, not bad. I don't think, 123 kids transitioned to five days a week in four different categories. Kudos to my staff for managing all of this and keeping up their synchronous teaching and learning and figuring out how to be innovative and keep kids engaged. You know, we certainly have attendance issues, just like the other schools do. We're partnering with high schools, and traditionally, the trend that we see is that they're not attending with us, they're not attending at their high school either. I definitely think that for some kids, we have already seen attending five days a week is helping. Kids need routine, it doesn't matter if they're six or if they're 18, routine is really good. So getting them back in their schedule with us and getting them more hands-on has been definitely a blessing for us. We're really fortunate that the advisory committee, the superintendents and the school board reps that sit on our advisory committee have been really committed and very supportive of me working on this. It's taken a lot of time for staff and I to work this all out, and I'm happy to report that the next 51 kids for Media and Culinary will be in place by after-break. So we'll have another 51 transitioned, and I'll have new numbers in March to talk about. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we are a little bit different. Our classrooms are a lot bigger because we have lab space. I don't have traditional classroom sizes, square-footage-wise, and so I want to make sure people understand that we are able to do this because of our setup, and we are still absolutely maintaining health and safety guidelines. We're really lucky, we have entrances for programs, kids just come and go from their program, they're not integrated into the school. Kids don't change classes, so I don't have to worry about 50 kids in a hallway. My structure is just different. So I'm a little bit of a different circumstance, but all of leadership has been really supportive of me doing this and transitioning back for kids because we could meet health and safety guidelines and do it appropriately for each high school. Questions?
I have a question. Can you clarify, so it's students that come to one of your programs, and they come either morning or afternoon, and they then return to, sometimes they return to their high school, correct?
Yes.
So they are somebody who's coming to you five days a week for their program, and they cannot go back to their high school because it's their remote day at their high school.
Right.
That's what you were talking about with the transportation?
Yes.
So others didn't get transported home.
Correct.
Others can go back to their high school in some cases and do classes remote? How are they doing that?
So it's a little bit different, they're really handling it on a case-by-case situation. So at Sumner, some students go home and Zoom in. If the family can't transport or the student doesn't have a vehicle, in some instances, if the class has been small enough that they can absorb them, they go to their class. If the class is too big and they can't absorb them, they have a designated area for HCTC kids to go, headphones, and kids Zoom from there, and they just can't actively participate because they're all in the same space together. And so that's how Sumner's handling it, MDI is doing the same thing. MDI is doing exactly the same thing. Each individual student is looked at, does that student have space to attend their classes so it doesn't push those numbers over for that teacher and for that classroom to keep that physical distancing? If so, they're allowed to go, and if not, they also have a designated space for kids to go, to Zoom into their classes remotely, or kids go home.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
No questions, but I'm really happy to hear this.
Great reporter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Beth, I wanted to do a check-in to see if we had more public comments before we move on. None, okay.
Would you cut it to price, because this is usually a hot-button topic, but...
Do any of our board members have any other questions before we move on? All right. So item three under New Business is first read of policies. The first read we have up for tonight is BEDH, CBR, and ADC.
I'll make a motion to accept a first read of policies BEDH, CBR, and ADC.
I second that motion?
Any discussion?
May I add just one thing? If you look at ADC in your materials, the updated version for Main School Management is simply the policy ADC, and if you look at my handwritten notes in the margin, hopefully you can read them, you can see where much of what is in the new revised policy ADC combines our current policy ADC and our regulations ADC. It's also upgraded and updated a little bit to more current, particularly when you're talking about the devices, electronic devices, vaping devices and so forth. When we looked at it and we talked about it, we thought that the newer version was cleaner and addressed everything that we needed to have addressed. It also incorporated formally into the policy provision of counseling and support services as necessary, something that we do anyway, but this would include it in the policy. And I thought it was a real good discussion at the committee, just so the board knows that, that that's what you're voting on as a first read. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, so item CBR, the input a job description for the superintendent, and then were there any proposed changes to BEDH?
If you remember, a couple of meetings ago, the board had requested some information from the board's attorney on policy KE, but also on BEDH. And some of what was asked about in BEDH was around the use of judgment in permitting someone to make a public comment but remain anonymous. Our attorney advised against doing that for a couple of reasons. One is because in person, when a person comes and speaks at the podium, like Mrs. Martel did, you know, you identify yourself, who you are, and you make your comment. It's the same thing when it's virtual. The other piece is when it's a virtual public comment, it's a matter of public record and free of access. So one of the things the attorney recommended was, and we may need to talk about this, and this is the part of the second read, in having our person, it's Beth in this case, if somebody writes in and has an email comment, if it's one of those pieces that says, "I don't want to be recognized," perhaps the question is asked, then is this something you would like us to forward on to the appropriate party? That way it eliminates that piece of violating confidentiality. But that's one of the conversations that the committee needs to have moving forward. So the committee opted to bring this policy forward with no changes at this point in time to discuss those options further, but also to take a model that, and this isn't a policy, but Steve Bailey had provided us back when he came and did a workshop with all of you, a three-fold document that we would make a public document that outlines specifically the final version of our public policy, excuse me, public participation policy, along with other information about board meetings that can be distributed, can be put on the website, and we're talking about technology, perhaps could be put up on our screen here so that people could see it when the public policy, excuse me, public participation item came up. So no changes at this point in time, but still a few things to discuss. And Abby and Beth, if I missed something, please add to it.
No, Dan, but I did just, I did just receive a message from someone, and I don't know if there's anything that we can do about it at this point. However, Dale Hamilton might be getting school board questions. The email address on the video on Facebook says to email questions or comments to dhamilton@ellsworthmaine.org.
What medium is that on?
It's on Facebook. It's on the Ellsworth High School Live page, I don't know if anyone can fix that, but Dale, if you're watching, if you've gotten any emails, please feel free to forward those to ealtary@ellsworthschools.org.
It's fixed, Mr. Wiggins.
Yeah, thank you, Beth.
The one other piece on that policy that just thought about was, if you remember a meeting months ago where we had the same question come up eight or nine or 10 or 15 times, we had to answer it. One of the things that we talked to the attorney is, you know, there is no requirement by your policy that you answer questions. In fact, there is some recommendation that many of the questions you would refer back to the appropriate place, so if it's a question with regard to something specific in a classroom, specific to a school, you may refer it back to that place, and the board may not answer. But along with that is, there's no requirement that you answer the same question multiple times. That was another piece. But Jen, to answer your question in a long-winded way, no recommended changes, but further discussion for a second read.
Well, I think it's interesting, the point of not having to answer. I think we found that out when we were talking under the support discussion, where we maybe all didn't have enough time to reflect on a comment, wasn't really a question. But it does give us the opportunity to process that information and then revisit it in another manner, which I think is helpful for all of our board members, especially when you maybe just didn't have the opportunity to get input or think it over for yourself before you make a comment, so I appreciate that piece. All right, any other discussions? So all those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
I can see Kelly and Abby, so we're good.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so the motion was Kelly and the second was Abby?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, I got a question from somebody who couldn't get through because of the problem. They just wanted to, they couldn't hear, what are the spirit day colors for tomorrow? Sorry.
Tomorrow is red for love and orange for helpfulness.
Okay, red and orange, okay, thank you.
That's important information.
It is.
All right, item number four under New Business, second read and approval of policies. This will be GBEB, KE, and BHC, I believe?
I'll make a motion to accept a second read and approval of the policies of GBEB, KE, and BHC.
I second that.
Discussion?
What I can do is just share with you, the conversation from the policy committee was on GBEB. The remaining item from last month, remaining items were, one was, it was inadvertently left off the policy language about friending students or following students or engaging in other interactions on social networking sites. We've added that language in, it's on the second page, letter J. So that is language that the committee, along with their meeting with the administrators, who brought some input from their schools, agreed upon. The other thing that the committee talked about was how we address those items for volunteers. And one of the concerns that we had in the conversation was, many of our volunteers are parents, majority of them are, and are we going to lose volunteers if there's a prohibition on friending or following? So with advice from the attorney, one of the things that we looked at was, we want to hold people to a higher standard, but the following language would be appropriate. So if you look parenthetically below item L on the second page of this policy, it says, "Items J, K, and L are highly recommended but not mandatory for ESD-approved volunteers. However, approved volunteers are required to maintain appropriate professional boundaries between adults and students as described in this policy with regard to any error actual with students." And what that refers to is two paragraphs on the first page of the policy that appear as in bold and italicized print, which talks about the intent of the policy and the understandings of interactions. Those were the only potential changes from your first read. And Beth and Abby, I would welcome you, add anything else in?
Just to clarify, because we had a lot of concern about teachers needing to communicate with students. If a teacher is communicating with a student on something that is school-related, it is allowed. So no, we're not trying to say you can't, you know, remind that student however way you need to remind that student to get their homework in. No, that's school-related. Or, we also talked with administration about different scenarios with field trips and other things, and we made sure that there are those allowances, because you need to know where your kids are when you guys run field trips.
And there are a couple of places in the policy where the language says that. For example, on J, it says, "Outside of any school-approved activity," and that allows that school-approved communication. It's also referenced in another part of the policy, which addresses the field trips. And I think one of the trips we talked about was a trip that some of our students and adults take to Florida, and that is the only way to communicate when you have different groups. I thought it was a healthy conversation with the policy committee and a great input from the administrators when they came to me.
Yes, and I would add to that, reiterate what Dan just said, that it was really, really fantastic and beneficial meeting with the administrators, so that we knew we were including what was important and not, in essence, wasting words on things that didn't necessarily apply or, you know, that kind of thing. So it was wonderful.
And KE was the next one, there are no changes.
And I have a quick question about this one. I had curiosity, so the policy committee talked about staff and volunteers. I was just wondering if a question of school board members came up with regard to these issues. these issues.
Actually, there was one reference to a school, school board member, and actually, it may have been you, Mr. Markosian. The example that was given was if you happen to have a student who was employed in your business and needed to communicate, whether that would be acceptable or not. And yes, that would be.
Okay. But no specific discussion about school board members in the same way we're talking about staff or volunteers?
No, that, no, there was not.
I'm just curious.
Policy KE, the only change to policy KE is that there would be a punctuation at the end of the word "any" in the last paragraph that was left off in the first read, but that was the only change in that policy. Committee decided to change the language slightly with regard to how this policy may and may not be used with the public concerns and complaints, and it directed employees to process matters for employment through appropriate grievance procedure. Again, it was a positive conversation. We got a lot of input and a lot of copies of policies that the committee reviewed to come to that conclusion. And on BHC, this is another one where we had a lot of conversation a couple of meetings and workshops ago. There are two changes in it for the second read. One is at the end of the introductory paragraph, and what we added was, "While it is acknowledged and understood, there will be instances when board members interact with staff members in the community, such interactions shall not be in conflict with this policy." And in the last section where formerly said "school board and teachers," it now says "school board and staff so as to encompass all staff and not just our teachers." Again, real healthy conversation on that policy also. Beth, Abby, anything you want to add?
I think we hashed it out quite well. But is there anything that anybody isn't clear on? Any questions, any other concerns we can possibly, you know, clarify for you?
No, thank you for that work.
It was a lot.
It was good work.
It was a really great conversation that went into, into coming to the consensus that we did, which was really, really helpful.
Really was.
I really appreciate the collaboration with the administrators, too. I think that was great and healthy.
All right, we want to make sure our policies aren't hindering them, but helping them with, you know, their processes every day.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I can see Kelly and Abby, so we're five oh. All right. Item five, discussing consideration of COVID-19 leave procedure. And before we start on this, I'm just going to let everybody know, I might have to change audio, so if you see this happen and you can't hear me, just bear with me. My AirPods are dying, it's a long meeting. All right. So I think everybody received this information from Dan, and Dan can give a little information on why we're constructing this and putting this forward.
Yep. What I can tell the board is, back with the passage of acts back at the beginning of the pandemic, one of the pieces that was put in place was the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which incorporated a number of different leaves for staff. That expired on December 31, 2020, and there's been a lot of discussion, both at the national level and the state level, one which would be, is this going to be extended by the federal government, which it has not been yet. We're still hearing some rumblings that it may, in a different form or in the same And others with, what should local school districts do? Should you expand the act or extend it, or should you do something different locally if that's what works best for your department? Guidance that we received from our attorneys was not to extend it, but to look to do something locally that provided the same types of health and safety protections for staff. So what this draft proposes is a number of things, and some of these are consistent with what was in the FFCRA act that expired. One would be, and this, this is almost the same, employees who have been advised to quarantine or isolate as a result of a potential work-related COVID-19 exposure, as determined by the main CDC, will be placed on paid leave for up to 10 days during their quarantine isolation period. There was a limit of 10 days on that in FFCRA. This would be for up to 10 days for any quarantine and if it's work-related. That does not come out of the employee's sick leave, but the thing we want to point out is, and this is addressed in a paragraph later, employees who are able to work remotely will not be charged with leave days at all. And one of the things that we've been very fortunate to be able to do for our employees and for our students and for our families is, under certain conditions, we have been able to provide the opportunity to work remotely. So you think of those days that we've had a positive case and a number of close contacts. Most often, we've been able to provide an opportunity for remote work, which does a couple of things. It allows us to keep students and staff safe and healthy, but it also eliminates the potential for have to, having to go remote for a longer period of time. That's another reason why this is very important to have. And so work-related, it's a paid, paid leave, and what we have found is, we're using very little paid leave. We're very fortunate on that. Second paragraph is talking about employees who, employees who have been advised to quarantine or isolate as a result of a non-work-related piece would be permitted to take leave during the period of quarantine isolation, and they may use their accrued sick leave to do so. Again, that's for non-work-related, but I would also point out, language down in the next to last paragraph, not only do we encourage employees to work remotely, we try to find ways to support them working remotely, and if they are working remotely, they would not have their accrued sick leave used. Third paragraph in there, and this relates to travel, employees who elect to travel and who are required by the CDC travel guidelines to quarantine or isolate upon their return would be on unpaid leave for the period of quarantine or isolation or while awaiting a negative COVID-19 test. This would not be a sick leave piece, however, this would be a piece where, what we want people to do is plan their vacation. So if you're going to travel, be prepared. So you come back, you can test up to 72 hours before you return. You can get a test when you return, and as long as you have those pieces, you can come back to work. So we're encouraging people to do that, but in the event where that doesn't happen, there is still a remote working opportunity. And the final piece would be, employees who have notified their supervisor they're unable to secure childcare for COVID-19-related reasons, for example, if their childcare closes as a result of a COVID exposure. There's a form that can be filled out and submitted to our business manager, and employees may use their accrued sick leave to receive pay during this time. Typically, when your childcare closes, sick leave is not a benefit that you get. It's, it's leave. However, permitting use of accrued sick leave would be helpful to our employees, but also, this is a case where if you can work remotely, there would not be leave. One of the pieces in a conversation with a group that I'm working on with an MOU was, in the prior act, there was an opportunity, or with childcare, that the employee could receive two-thirds pay not to exceed $200 a day, which in essence would be two-thirds pay and one-third's use of sick leave. There was a request for consideration of that. Again, for me, I think the fact that we're providing an opportunity to use leave when leave sometimes is not possible, but also to support, support and encourage remote work, which would eliminate that problem. So this is a proposal we put on the table for the board's consideration, and again, it is, it is a procedure. You'll notice language in the bottom that says it would remain in place through April 13th, at which time it would be reevaluated. That is, I believe, your next board meeting, and it says, "The school may at discretion discontinue this at any time if circumstances change." That allows you to change in the event that something changes at the federal level. And this was, this was all vetted by the school department's attorney.
I have some questions to try and clear.
Yep, yeah, that's a lot. A lot at you.
Okay. So because we, you said, school-related and non-school-related, does that mean, say, teacher A goes to school and is told she's had close contact with somebody possibly in the school?
Yes.
That is school-related?
Yep.
If she, she went to the doctor's office and found out later the secretary had--
Non-school-related.
That's not, that's not, that's what you're talking about?
Yep, exactly.
School-related and non-school-related?
Yep.
And then with the childcare, there's no provision for somebody who, even though they have the opportunity to, to work remote, where having a child home or many children home, whatever, for whatever reason, could not then do their duties? Is there's no provision for that?
No, no, there, there is.
But I'm saying, okay, but they couldn't, even if they, even though remote is a possibility, they would not be able to do that?
No, no, yes, in, in this case. So let's just say that one of our employees, the childcare where their child goes has an exposure, and that daycare closes, and they have, they have nothing else they can do. They can fill this form out, and if they can't work, they would be allowed to use sick leave. Typically, typically, that's not sick leave, that's not use of sick leave. In this case, we're saying they can use that. However, if we are able to work on a remote working piece, which we've been very fortunate to, we've had some employees that have had this happen, if they work remotely, it doesn't come out of accrued sick leave, they're able to perform their duties. And again, to me, that, that's the beauty of doing this. This allows us to find ways to have our people work remotely so that it would, we don't experience a long-term remote, remote-only option. If you look at schools up in the Bangor area, I noticed Bangor is back in fully remote again because of exposures. So that's one of the reasons that we want to put this forward as a procedure. You'll find that most other school systems around are doing this or something similar. I, I think it's a good move for our staff and our community, frankly, to be honest with you.
Dan, just one question. I just want to confirm that this is for all employees, not just teachers?
All employees, yeah, everybody, yeah.
Okay.
Dan, I have a quick question. If we were to want to get some input from staff prior to making a decision on this, where are we at with, so as of December 31, that FFCRA ended, what are we doing right now?
We're, we're actually in, in the midst of kind of a twilight zone, if you will. We do have some employees for whom this would impact, and I believe that's why this language that says it would be retroactive. So we, we need to have something in place.
Okay.
Dan, have we had situations where staff can't work remotely from home?
I, Kelly, I don't think in terms of a, an exposure or a quarantine. I don't think we have.
Okay.
I'm trying to recall. I know that we've had some circumstances where, very few, where it's the reason that a person requested remote work that hasn't been approved. So for example, if I came in and said, "I feel uncomfortable, but I don't have a health condition," or "I don't have a documented condition of a family member that I'm caring for," or "I don't have a childcare piece," if I don't have that, if I just say, "I'm not comfortable," that hasn't been approved. But to my knowledge, we've approved every other one. Now, there have been some cases where, prior to the expiration of the law, somebody was a close contact, and they weren't able to work on a day because they were going to get a test. That's the case where they'd be put on that paid leave, they'd get their pay, it would come out of their sick leave. So there have a couple of those, a couple of those situations. But this, this would cover that.
Yeah, okay.
So what I'm thinking about this, I'm trying to weigh out between, how do we all, we don't want to overly encourage our teachers to have to work in person when there's a possibility of a child who has been exposed, because I feel like that could be one of the areas of curious on. You had mentioned there's a two-thirds option?
Well, what, what the two-thirds is, this, this goes back to the childcare piece.
Yeah.
In, in the original act, what it allowed was two-thirds pay not to exceed $200 a day in a situation where you're caring for a son or daughter whose school or daycare is closed for COVID-related reasons. That's what that was. So that's where you're looking at, two-thirds pay, one-third's administrative leave. That's where that came from.
So it has to be a closing, not because a child was--
No, because if, if we have a case where we have a positive case in our school, and if you look at the situations we had, we will identify the close contacts, the person who tested positive is in isolation, all the close contacts, students or staff, are in quarantine, so we're not letting those people work.
I'm just saying, hypothetically, if I'm a teacher who has a first grader, and that first grader gets notified they've been in close contact and now has to stay home.
So I'm the teacher, it's my child who's a close contact. In, in that case, we've had that happen where, if we're able to arrange for that teacher to work remotely, they can work remotely and be home with their child who's in quarantine. Yes. But to me, that, that's, if it's in our school system, that, that is, that is a work-related piece. But either way, if we can arrange working remotely, they will still get paid, they'll still perform their duties.
What if that child, what if the teacher lives out of district, so their child attends school out of district, and they still have that child now?
As, as long as they're able to work remotely, they can do their duties, still get paid, and it won't come out of their sick leave. And again, I, I go back to the piece that, knock on wood, we've been very fortunate to be able to do that and keep people safe and also avoid the full scale, because you guys have all seen other districts that have gone remote for a week, or for two weeks, or for a month. I'm gonna knock on wood as I say it, we haven't done that yet. And again, this, this helps that, this also helps ensure that our staff members, we're talking teachers, but this is our other staff members, too. This allows our staff members to still get paid and still perform their duties.
Beth, is there any, any public comment? Thank you. Is there any other question from the board on this?
Just if there is a special circumstance, would it come before, could they, could they make a request?
Well, one of the things, Abby, maybe this goes to your question, since, since July, and again, back in July, we sent out a letter to all of our staff outlining, you know, we're getting ready to come back to school, and certainly it was different in July than it is now, we're getting ready to come back to school, please let us know if there is any reason that we, you should be considered for remote employment. And the things that we put in place were health and safety condition, particularly funeral risk category, and provide a doctor's note, you're the caretaker for a family member who has a documented medical condition, you have a demonstrated childcare issue, those types of things. We put that in place, and we started the year that way. In fact, we have a number of staff members who have been working remotely for those reasons for a good portion of the year. So that's been in place, but we get a number of requests, and Carolyn and I typically review those on a case-by-case basis. We look at how we've done it since July, we look at those standards, and with FFCRA that expired in December, we applied that to those cases as well, and we would do the same thing with this doctor.
So just hypothetically, if somebody, if somebody who worked in the school had, somebody they had to care for suddenly had to be quarantining in their house, and a person that they had to take care of, just because of the nature that took so much of their time that they could then not do their duty remotely, could they come to you for an exception, I guess?
We'd have, we'd look at it on a case, I mean, that's, that's a lot of different factors, but--
Right.
We would, we would look at it on a case-by-case basis, and one of the things that I would, would say to you, and we've said this since COVID started, we've looked at all of the policies and regulations that we've had, and we've tried to make sure that we err on the side of our staff members.
Right. But there is that option, they come to you, and they can talk about it and--
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Dan, was this, was this time previously paid for with federal funding, or does that come from the school's budget?
It's come from the school department.
Interesting.
Okay.
But, but again, again, Beth, the thing I would stress is--
Just moving forward. Oh, go ahead.
The thing I would stress is, we've had the majority of time that staff members have been in quarantine or isolation, the major, overwhelming majority of time, they have been able to work remotely, so I don't want to say it's an issue because they're not able to be in school.
I was just thinking that--
It's like an unfunded mandate. It's like an unfunded mandate.
Right. Well, I, I'm just wondering if we do this with this policy, thinking that it should be kept in mind for budget for next year, because this is obviously something that's going to be ongoing, and we want to make sure that we have that set aside. Because I, I would think, while we've been lucky to not have to worry, that most of our teachers have been able to work remotely, if we do have someone who has direct exposure who then ends up positive and feeling really, really miserable, then that person is going to be using that time, that full-- to be using that time, that full...
Well, I think, I think another piece comes into that, Beth. If we get to that situation where somebody gets in that unfortunate situation, you also still have Family Medical Leave Act, which provides up to 12 weeks, and that runs concurrently with sick time also. But I think the other piece is, based upon where we are now, if we had a staff member who used the FF-CRA leave for a couple of days and it didn't come out of their sick time, that doesn't present an additional cost. That's just two sick days that don't get deducted this year. So it doesn't become a direct budgetary item for next year.
Okay. And I want to stress that I wasn't asking that question because I don't think we should have it. I think it's almost like, it's almost like workman's comp. Like, if you get exposed at work, you should have, be covered if you miss work. So I just wanted to clarify, though, to make sure that that was...
And Beth, I think you're right on that. This does that. If you're exposed at work, you're covered. But as most of our, most of our staff members have done, they, they don't want to sit home and do nothing. They want to work. So we appreciate that.
Yeah, I was just add, just as Abby had mentioned, I think it's important to have this in place, obviously, and I think we can all agree to that. And I would like to just reiterate that exception, you know, if something happens and we have somebody that's in just a really tough spot, that they have the opportunity to speak to Dan and Carolyn, and I think we've made that clear that that can happen, which is helpful.
And I would add to that, Jen, by saying, you know, we've had times where, and I think a meeting or two ago, we brought to you a request for a leave of absence for a staff member. So that's always an option, too. And we have those conversations with our staff members, because again, these are people that work for us, they're caring for the children that we have in our charges. We want to make sure that they're safe and well and are not in a difficult situation. So...
Thank you. Any further discussion? Are we taking a motion if somebody...
I'm not, are we doing the two-thirds thing or not? Was that automatically projected or was that an option?
No, that was, that was something that in a conversation with a group that I was meeting with, they said, is that something that could be considered? So that's up to you guys.
So is it in there or is it not in there?
It's not in there right now. What's in there right now? What I'm recommending at this point in time is, is that piece. And the reason that I'm recommending it that way is, we still encourage and we still want people to work remotely, even if it's a childcare piece, so that one-third, two-third does not become an issue. No sick leave has to be used.
Do we need to decide on the one-third, two-third? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you well, Dan.
If you want to do that, then the motion would be to change that language for the daycare to be paid two-thirds and only require use of one-third of a sick leave day unless the person can work remotely.
Okay. How does everybody feel about that, I guess? I'm for it.
I'm okay with that.
I think whatever is in the best support of our staff. So I would be okay with the two-thirds.
So do you want to change the language to include the two-thirds then?
So if you take the motion that's listed as a recommendation to authorize, to amend, excuse me, to implement COVID-19 leave procedure as amended to reflect two-thirds, one-thirds for childcare, if you'd like to make the motion in that sense, that would address what, what it sounds like it wants to do.
I'd make a motion to include the one-third, two-third.
I'll second that.
That's Abby and Kelly.
Okay. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much. Again, if you lose me because of my audio, I'm going to have to fix it. I'll just keep saying that in case it happens. So item number six, discussing a consideration of draft 2021, 2022 of the school department calendar.
Just real quickly for you folks, this is a first-read only, and just to put something positive here, this is predicated on the fact that we're going to be back in school next fall, full-time, five days a week with all students and staff. Okay? That's what this is predicated on. This has been distributed to the leadership of all five of the associations that we have with a request for feedback from them by February 26th, and we'll bring it back to you folks in the next meeting. I've also given it to the administrators and the leadership team and asked them for feedback. So I'm probably going to get some duplicate feedback, because I think some of the staff members have already responded to the, but that's okay. But the reason you've got two drafts here, in our conversations with the Hancock County superintendents, we always look at a couple of things. One is, we do try to be as consistent as possible, because we do have students that are shared at HCTC. We also depend upon each other, you know, we have a good portion of our student body, Elsworth High School, that come from sending schools. So it makes some sense to have some commonality. The other piece is, we do have a law we have to comply with that allows for no more than five dissimilar days with school systems that send to HCTC. So we've had conversations, and across the county, there are some districts that are considering a start date of September 1 for students, and there are some that are considering a start date of August 30th, which is the Monday of that week for students. So the primary differences in the calendars that you folks are seeing would be with those two start dates. But please note on the version that starts on August 30th, Friday, September 3rd would not be a school day, and the purpose of that would be for a long weekend, for Labor Day weekend. That would allow your school year to start with two four-day student weeks as a way to work into the year. The model that starts on September 1st would be, September 1st would be your first day for students' grades K through 9, because as you know, we have a freshman-only day at the high school. And then the 2nd and the 3rd, Thursday and Friday of that week, would be school days for everybody. So those are the only differences, other than the number of storm days that are built in. The version that starts on August 30th has four storm days built in, the version that starts on the 1st has three. So I bring it to you for a first read, only to get a first read and to see if there's any feedback that you have. I can tell you that the preliminary feedback I've seen, probably by two-thirds to one-third, people are favoring the September 1 start date. That's from our staff members. There is one request, if we were to go with that, could we have the pre-service days on the 30th and 31st instead of the previous week? But that's just, that's feedback we've gotten so far. I expect we're going to get a lot more.
That's exactly what I was going to ask. What was the thought of starting, doing the professional development days the week before?
We've, we've always had them the week before students start, Kelly, because we always have new staff orientation, and we've had the two days the week before. It used to be that it would coincide with, depending upon where Labor Day fell, and it didn't seem as early. Last year, we actually went early like this, and it actually ended up working well. So we put that out there. And the other reason I go back to is, there are other districts that are looking at starting on the 30th. So if we were to start on the 30th, that's the only way we put it. But again, that's why we bring it out, we want to get feedback from everybody, including you guys. And it's only a first read.
So Dan, that, so the first one, where we would start on the 1st, there's only three snow days built in, correct?
That's correct.
So potentially, if we go over our snow days, we could be going far into, I mean, with the last day being June 17th, if we go over on our snow days, you're talking the 20th, and if we go over by more than one, you're talking the 24th. I'm just thinking, I appreciate the feedback of wanting to start later, but I also want to keep in mind, when we finish the school year on Friday, it just extends it out that much further if we have to use snow days, more snow days.
And, and you know, the storm day piece is a good point, Beth. The thing that I think sometimes gets lost on that is, students in Elsworth have to go to school 177 days. But again, I think it's for your consideration. What we're looking for tonight is just an approval of a first read. And certainly, when I come back to you folks in March, I'm going to be coming back with all the information that we've received from everybody. Other districts will have fleshed out their calendars, and we'll come back with a proposal.
So you're not looking for really our opinions tonight?
No, I, I will take it. No, no, that's why, that's why it's here, Kelly, yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
So if you have a preference on a start day?
Oh, I definitely have a preference. September 1st is my preference.
And I think you're going to be in the majority.
Okay.
So my question is, if we take the option where we have three storm days built in, and we need four or five, could we use, on storm day four or five, could we use our equipment to do remote and have it count?
Well, I think that's, that's a conversation to have for next year. You know, we made the conscious decision this year not to have snow days be virtual days. And I think it was a good decision, in all honesty. I know our staff has appreciated it. I'm going to gather that our kids have appreciated it. I see a couple of our staff members in the back of the room nodding, so I'm gathering they do appreciate it.
But if we got too far...
In a, in a more normal year, in a more normal year, that could be an option. You know, if you've got to a point where we're using a lot of storm days, we could take the option of, okay, we've done this before, we can do a virtual day on a storm day, we see a forecast coming, everybody be prepared for it. So yes, that is an option.
So maybe if we go over the allotted days?
Yeah, in some of those years, you know, you have, in some years, and I can think, second or third year where we came out of RSH24, we had used three or four storm days by the end of December.
Yeah.
So that might have been a case where you look at January, February, maybe we go with a virtual day. That is an option.
Just because I don't want our, I don't want our seniors in the school too long, and they have to move into dorms. A lot of, especially in the South, they want you them to move into dorms, really bad.
With your seniors here, seniors have to go 170 days, and we've got that built in also. So we try to track the storm days there. Fortunately, we haven't had to have seniors extend their year yet. So I'm hearing of September 1. Any other board members with any preferences on the start? Again, there's not a lot of other variants in this calendar.
I like the idea of September 1. In looking at the calendar, I'm thinking, not only does it give our staff extra time to prepare, I kind of think that, because I'm just going to stay positive here, we will be back in school full-time next year, and the three-day and the four-day might be a good way to ease into that, back to five days a week, full schedules for everybody, if we're not already there by the end of this year. So I like the idea of that and giving everybody a little extra time. And like Abby said, we always, we probably will have that chance at a fully remote day if we were to be looking at extending that school year too, too far into the 4th of July.
So Dan, at the March meeting, you'll bring back all the feedback from staff?
Bring back all the feedback and a recommendation for you. And again, one of the things, it's the challenge is, we have to submit a calendar to the state, regional calendar, that shows no more than five dissimilar days with HCTC.
Okay.
So that may guide some of this, but really, if, if the biggest changes we're looking at are August 30th, September 1, the only other decision really is, where do we put those professional development days? And one of the things that's nice about having them the week before is, it gives staff a number of days off prior to the first day. If you put them on the 30th and 31st, staff day, staff day, and you start the next day with the kids. But we'll get that feedback from staff. I know that they're preparing it, and they always do a good job in giving this feedback.
Great.
A motion?
I'm ready. Are you ready, Jen, for a motion?
I am ready.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the first read of versions 1 and 2 of the draft 2021, 22 ESD school calendar.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-oh.
I have my finger right on the mute button.
I appreciate that. All right. Item number seven, FY22 budget development update.
Guys, it's late at night, so I will try not to put you to sleep with too many numbers, but...
That'd be appreciated.
We'll run, run through this pretty quickly. Just to reiterate again, Wednesday, February 17th, will be a public budget forum that includes representation from Chamber of Commerce, municipal side of the city, finance committee, city manager, school department, finance committee, and superintendent, talking about budget development procedures. And there'll be more information coming out on that. The other piece that I have provided to you is, and I'll just reiterate really quickly, we did receive our subsidy printout, which is available online for anyone that wants to find it at the Department of Ed's website. I also sent you a copy of it, and I promise you I will not go through that line by line tonight. That's a meeting in itself. But the main numbers are for preliminary for FY22, $22.5 million increase in pre-K through 12 education, increases the state's contribution to 51.83%, and reduces the amount that we have to raise locally to get our full subsidy. Again, preliminary numbers won't be filed until the legislature finishes, but a couple of key points. One is, when I talk about the mil rate expectation, which is the amount of money we have to raise locally, and what this is, is a mil rate for local contribution that is applied against the three-year average valuation of the City of Elsworth. Last year, the rate was 8.18 mils. It's proposed for next year to be 7.9. When you apply that on the City of Elsworth valuation, average three years, which is just over $1 billion, we see about $8.6 million we have to raise, but that's a reduction of $82,000 over what we had to raise this year. So that's a positive piece of news. With regard to subsidy, which is what we would receive for our K through 12 programming, again, that's section 5C on the document that I sent you a copy of. You take CTE subsidy out of that, and you take debt service out of that. We're slated to receive $4,329,735.49, which is an increase of $161,000 for that portion of our programming. So that is good news. For CTE, which is in section 5B, and we've posed some questions, because what this shows is a decrease of $20,000 over what we received this year. The challenge that we see with that is, right now, our draft budget is going to include the cybersecurity program that we suspended last year. If you remember last year, we implemented a new program in hospitality and tourism. We felt that we couldn't justify bringing cybersecurity forward. We notified the Department of Ed, and they reduced our formula last year by the amount of money that goes to new programs. We're questioning now whether, with us putting that program back in, whether that money has actually been included. So we're thinking that it's not included. If it is, we're thinking that we will probably have an increase of 50,000 or 60,000 rather than a decrease. More to come on that. As far as debt service, we're going to be receiving $102,000 less in debt service reimbursement. But the reason for that is, our interest is going down on our payments. You'll also see a corresponding reduction in debt service expense on the expenditure side. So when you look at all those figures together, we're slated to receive right now is an increase of just under $40,000 in increased funds from the Department of Education. Now, it's a small positive, but it's a positive at this point, something to build upon. Just want you to have it. And again, if you look in the document that I provided you, it gives you the sections that you can find it in the ED 279. And I assure you, at some point in time, we'll be happy to do a workshop with you on 279s. It's a lot of fun. No, and I really mean that, I do. The other piece is, as far as the process, our administrators and department heads have been doing a great job working with our staff, and our staff have been doing a great job entering their purchase requisitions, along with everything else that they're doing. They're putting that information in. We're starting the process of meeting with our department heads at the school department level, and we'll be bringing our finance committee in, possibly, and I'm going to look on the screen and see what their responses are. Possibly next week, a finance committee meeting. So be prepared, Paul and Jen. But the process is moving forward very well, and as you know, we're at the forefront of it. We hope to have a final draft of a budget by the time of a regular April meeting, or possibly a special April meeting, and one that can go to the city council in May. So a lot of work, but it's a, it's a good thing. And when you're looking at the mission and the vision, and that we're trying to take care of our kids, it's really, it's a great process to go through. So with all of that, that's as quick as I can do it. Any questions? Good.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Lots of work in that, a lot.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan. And I would just like to say, I would recommend anybody who's interested in the budget process to tune in next Wednesday. I think it'll be really informative and a good start to the budget season for both the school department and the city. I know, you know, sometimes it's a good reminder that the only portion of the city budget that gets voted on is the school budget. And so it's really important for taxpayers to be informed on what we have coming forward for expenses, which we won't get into too many details on that, but just projections and how that's, you know, formatted and... many details on that, but just projections, and how that's, you know, formatted and discussed. So I think it'll be really, really informational, and I hope everybody tunes in.
Yeah, I want to endorse what Jen just said. This is the first time, I think, in recent memory, going back quite a ways really, that we've done this kind of forum. So I think it'd be really helpful for our citizens, helpful for the council, to learn about what we've got for us.
Yep. And the initial meetings so far have been really positive in how the ways that, we're just a big cycle, you know, how our school department attracts people to our city and how it all works. So I think, I think it'll be great. Moving on. Item K, calendar and announcements. Our school board workshop will be Tuesday, February 23, 2021, 6 o'clock in the City Hall Council Chambers, hopefully with all of us in attendance. School board meeting, Tuesday, March 9, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the City Council Chambers.
And Jen, can I just add a couple of things? One, there will be several committee meetings that take place between now and your next board meeting. I can see Finance, and I can see Personnel meeting on a fairly regular basis. Also, be prepared and be on the lookout for potential for a special board meeting on the 23rd. I'm in hopes that we're going to have a due process readmission hearing at 6 o'clock, and that means we'll have to push the workshop back to 6:30 or 6:45. But to me, that's a good reason to have a meeting. So I will, as soon as we finalize that, I will confer with Jen, and then get an email out to everybody.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Jen, there are no, there are no other questions or comments from the public side?
Great. We're going to make just the cutoff for 9 o'clock, I think. I entertain a need to adjourn. Anybody?
Yes, I know for the business, I knew that we adjourned this meeting.
I second that.
So is that Paul and Abby?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Paul and Beth.
Paul and Beth.
Five oh. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, good job.